Okay, one more minute to decide to see if you would like to on an agenda I don't want to end. Welcome, welcome to our town council meeting for our Maple Town Poetry Texas on this Tuesday of January 18th, 2022. We welcome you and want you to feel heard, valued, informed, and connected to your town and its council. We welcome diversity of opinion and what minority views as well as majority views to be heard. We also appreciate mutual respect despite opposing views. We have here Mr. Glenn Strauss, who will lead us in a pledge of allegiance and our invocation. Please stand.
To bow your head for a moment of prayer for yourself. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of living in this beautiful place on your beautiful earth. And we pray only for the knowledge of your will for us and the power to carry that out. We ask this in the name of the precious Son of Jesus. Amen. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is changed, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Glenn. Okay, uh, City Secretary Caroline Chapman will follow the call to confirm her form. Councilmember Brad Anderson.
You're here.
Councilwoman Reg Jaffe.
Here.
Mayor Tara Cinkovich.
Here.
Councilmember Tom Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Fowler.
Here.
And Councilmember Sidney White.
Here.
And form is confirmed. Thank you, Caroline. And there's items of community interest. Um, we have, um, I guess Councilmember Vincent sent a COVID home test free. Are available to be sent to your home by USPS. I think four boxes at a time. That's four tests at a time. Um, that is available at HTTPS colon backslash backslash slash special dot USPS dot com backslash test kits. I can repeat that if you need it. But it, um, I actually filled it out now. They do not send to businesses. Um, I tied that, but they will send it to residential homes. So, but it's very easy to do and there is no charge for shipping. If you didn't catch that, um, you can catch me after and I can give that to you. Also, um, we want to send our condolences to the family and friends of Ginny Simpson, the original co-owner of Eppen Jacks in Town and Country who passed away January 5th, 2022 from cancer. She's survived by her daughter Brienne, now 20 years old, her father and mother, and a brother, um, and several nieces and nieces. The funeral was held Thursday, January 13th with burial at Camp Ground Cemetery. Uh, the Camp Ground Work Day was just passed Saturday, um, so therefore there will be no Camp Ground Work Day this Saturday, um, like usual. Okay, under, and I want to, uh, some of you who were here earlier noticed we were testing equipment. Thanks again to Josh who's volunteering his time to set up the audio. Um, we now have a full audio system, which is very complex, so thank you for understanding. Um, even experts will tell you it's kind of complicated, so we're grateful that you volunteering to do that.
I'm just the lawyer.
Yes, and you're calling the lawyer. Okay, so hello, Emily?
Hello, guys. Can you hear me okay? That was too loud?
That was painful. Yes, ma'am, we can hear you. Okay, so Emily Ballin is under the weather and will be, uh, by audio tonight. Okay, so under reports, our financial report for December 2021. Um, thank you, Caroline. Oh, um, it's pretty basic. Our beginning balance was at $12,621.79. Um, we had several, um, purchases owing to the new equipment that we, you now see here and here. Um, and some invoices for the secretary, um, office supplies. A, a check for the lawn service finally cleared. That was actually from October. I believe it finally cleared. He came and picked it up. Um, there was a credit on the account and full transparency that credit should have gone to, um, the other entity and that's been now corrected. So that's why we do reconciliations, right? Okay, so.
Have we, have we got an invoice from Emily and Emily?
I have again requested. Do you have any news on that, Emily?
So I talked to Patricia today and all the partners are having difficulty getting the end of year bills collected. I've considered a purpose as a membership of maybe more than $1,800. And you will have six to pay.
Okay, so Emily, the sound quality was rather poor and sketchy there. Am I to understand you said that the end of the year bill was $1,800?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, and she'll email that to, to us?
Yes, and then 60 days to pay once you repeat.
Okay, thank you so much. That is such a gift to our town and we're so appreciative. Thank you.
Can, can we get, uh, however we continue to evolve this financial report? Can we get something that shows us on a monthly basis what our financial cost exposure is just so we can have a good track?
Yes.
Even if it hasn't been invoiced, I mean, they know how many hours and you know what the rate is.
So we can, we can certainly, as we evolve, we're certainly going to improve as we get. Now, we have ordered the equipment books, but yet we don't have a computer to put it on yet. So maybe that's, we're getting there. Um, but yes, we will, um, be able to do a lot more once we get that up and going.
Can we have an estimate of the legal fees to study a warranty or something? I guess my concern is if we suddenly get a bill for $10,000.
She just said $1,800.
No, I got that, but I'm saying if we go too many months, because legal is one of our, our single biggest exposures on the order scale, right? I mean, it's a lot of money. And I know we're not using a whole lot of it, but I just want to make sure that we understand. Could you turn the volume up, please? I just want to make sure that we understand what our exposure is on a monthly basis. So even if we're not invoiced, they know how many hours and that way we can estimate.
So this is, I think, can we talk about this, about the financial report? Is this appropriate for us to talk about this or do we need, Emily, that's for you?
Well, have we moved to the report? I think we're too zonked on it now to separate financials.
Okay, I just want to point, point in order there. So, um, yes, I think we've requested for the invoices so we know where we are. They have written off quite a bit of legal services for which we're very grateful. But, um, I think our budget is what, $1,800 a month? And that's what they're going to give us for the month of December, is my understanding.
Yes, and it'll show you from the bill what we've had to write off so we can name it better in the future.
And, and to answer your question, uh, Mike, I have not received an invoice yet, so. Okay, so road report. Mike Griffin is here to give us the road report.
Mike Griffin, Strike Run in Poetry. The, uh, road team got together last Thursday and had a very generous donation of materials. Uh, men from Barnett Enterprises based here in Poetry were able to do part of work on the shoulders of, uh, 249 in between 986 and 2458. Um, and we put down quite a bit of crushed concrete, about nine tons of crushed concrete, and wet that and were letting that settle in. And we go back and put asphalt on top of that once the water permits and to see if that holds up better than just the asphalt itself. Uh, we will be at the mercy of the weather for the next couple of weeks using cold mixed asphalt. We have a fair amount of days to be able to make that work. Um, but we are continuing to, to make progress.
Thank you, Mike. Emily, are we able to, point of order, are we able to ask questions on the reports?
Is it a, so I could, you just clicked back in. Was it a factual type response? Or opinion or what, what was the question?
It's a, it's a clarifying question.
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you, Mike, for all that you guys are doing. Appreciate your work. Did you, um, get advice from the, the road crew people, road guys that we have, uh, that are volunteering to see if that was a, a good use of the concrete and everything?
Uh, we got advice from the owner of Barnett Enterprises, who are involved in construction and concrete work, uh, of quite a few different kinds. So, um, we got advice from them and then he also provided, um, a crew of his men, uh, supervised us.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, um, on H consent agenda, the minutes for the December 21st regular town council meeting. We have a motion to approve minutes as written. Or I, I think Emily told me that I could move to.
Take a motion.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
I'll go ahead and say.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of approving the minutes from December 21st, a regular town council meeting, um, raise your right hand. And that passes by. Okay, moving to our regular agenda items. On number one, we have presentation, a discussion of presentation by expert Steve Dewey, Director of Emergency Management Coordination for Kaufman County. Um, Steve, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it's getting, uh, getting open. Your body don't work the same as it used to. Thank you for having me here today. Uh, I just kind of wanted to go over the, uh, pieces of emergency management for you. I didn't see Richard Dill or Perry Mansickel here. Are they here? Okay. Um, I guess they chicken don't.
Yeah, this Richard said that he wasn't sure he could make it because they had so many emergency calls and it's been, he said it's been very overwhelming. So he wasn't promising to be here.
Okay. Well, one of the things that I wanted to go over, uh, and y'all have gotten me most of everything that you need. Because of where your city council or your city hall is located, Richard, if I'm wrong, he's going to be on poetry road inside the city of Kaufman, Zachary.
You mean inside the county.
County, would I say city? So he's going to be in Kaufman County.
That's currently real property, really, that we're considering.
Okay. Your, your city will be based in the county in which your city hall is located. As an example, the city hall for the state is in Dallas County. They do everything through Dallas County. Even though part of it extends into Kaufman County, if something happens in the state and the Kaufman County side, I step in and help. Make sure that, well, I work with Dallas County. It's going to be the same thing here in your city. Uh, your city hall in Kaufman County, all the paperwork and everything will go through us. And I will work with Richard and the folks in Hunt County to make sure that anything happening on that side of the line is taken care of.
Correction. Um, I'm not sure that's accurate.
There is.
Well, okay, so you're talking about paperwork if it's an accident in Kaufman County.
I'm talking about emergency management in any disaster.
Well, okay, so, um, clarification. I did call TML, the attorney for TML, to ask them such a question and she was very confused by that. So she said, um, this was Amber, the TML attorney. She said that, um, that typically, um, it runs along county lines. And so Richard, I had been called Richard of Hunt County and he said they deal with cities all the time. For instance, Josephine, um, uh, Roy City, um, several counties. There are several cities who are in jurisdiction of, of different coun- of counties and they draw it along county lines.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, am I understanding?
You're, you're correct, it's the county lines. However, where your city hall is based is the primary county. You're going to be dealing with, because the city will deal with me and Kaufman County. Because unless you move your city hall into Hunt County. And I coordinate with Hunt County so that they take care of everything across county lines in Hunt County. Each jurisdiction, each county will take care of what's in their county. But you have to have one, because if you try to do everything with two different counties, you're probably going to wind up failing in a lot of different things, including reimbursement.
Well, I do know that the emergency that we had just in front of this building, um, on December 28th was coordinated with Hunt County and yourself, you were there. Um, I know, and our poetry, um, emergency management coordinator, Lee, who is Chief Terry Mansickel. And he took the lead on that and I thought it went very, very well and, um, very appreciative. There were many multidisciplines there and very appreciative that the fellow, the driver who was injured was able to be, um, lifted to, um, in an ambulance and get surgery that he needed for his lower extremities. So I thought it went very well, of course, the road was shut down all day, but I'm so appreciative of our emergency management, uh, team. And so, but after talking to Richard and I was a little confused and so was the TML about, I'm not sure. Um, now I know Terry Mansickel is the poetry designated coordinator, so wouldn't he be the incident commander for that?
Okay. The emergency management coordinator doesn't have to. This is an, this is not a full blown disaster.
Okay.
He was the incident commander, but make sure that he was your fire chief. Didn't have anything to do with emergency management. In a, in a disaster, I'm not the emergency manager. I'm not the incident commander. I'm the emergency manager. I'd be operating for an emergency operations center. And you would have one or more incident commanders depending on how widespread it is. So that's part of where getting all the NIMs courses on your belt, as well as going to the emergency management conferences and stuff where you can learn more about this. Uh, the Texas Emergency Management Conference will be, uh, May 31st or June 30th in San Antonio. If you'd like to send a representative to that. Uh, also you need to be in touch with the Texas Division on Emergency Management. Uh, our district coordinator is Sarah Hall. And that is our military people for all things emergency management. So, and they have all the, all the stuff you need to help educate you on, on emergency management. And no offense to your lawyer on the phone here or any others, some of these, sometimes parts of the law become papers. And TML may or may not be amended, what is in Section 418 of the government code. So there is a possibility they did get you. That's why I recommend you call TML, the Texas Division of Emergency Management.
I did also reach out to them. They have not responded yet.
Well, our district coordinator, she's been off the hill for a couple of months. She is now back. I will make sure that she gets in touch with us. Uh, but that's how it starts off in any given disaster. And I'm not, I'm not trying to make any way, not going by precedent to what has been done all over the state up to this point. Uh, so, uh, in the event that a tornado or something comes through up here, there will be an incident commander that will report to the Emergency Operations Center. We will manage the resources that you need. We will support you on all the applications that you need. Get reimbursed for anything you spend on your recovery in that possession. And that's why I'm saying you need one primary. Because if you're trying to do that for two different counties, it gets confused and you take the chance of getting double up, double dipped or something like that. And then they come back and get you on. So it's better to coordinate for one than two.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, now that I've, I've digested a lot of the NIMs courses, most of them. Um, so you would be the EOC and then we would have incident commander depending on which county it, it falls into? Is that what you're saying?
No, it, it depends on who is the response. If you have chosen the Terrell Voltaire Fire Department as your fire department, they can act in Hunt County.
Well, no, but that's, that's not absolutely correct. Union Valley also serves with us. So it, it has, or dwell, I believe for many years, that it falls across county lines.
Well, what I'm trying to explain is Union Valley serves part of your city, so does Terrell.
Yes, sir.
If you as a city choose one or the other, that becomes your fire department and they can act on either side of the line.
But we don't really, we haven't really discussed that. And I think Richard, okay, so, I can be a few hundred seventy-five years. And so most, a lot of the Union Valley, they know exactly where that county line is. And that's, I'm, that's what that TML attorney was saying, that it might be confusing because if you've done it for that way for many, many years and you start changing it up where now all Terrell Voltaire Fire Department has to go all the way to Hunt County. They don't know where that line is. They don't know all of, all of that necessarily.
I'm thinking of it this way. If Terrell gives the call and the call is in Hunt County, they're going to respond. If their partner's on site, they're going to establish incident command irregardless of what county it's in. If they need to, they will notify Union Valley and tell them, we're here. You want to come and take over? Fine. If not, we can handle it for you. That's what I'm trying to tell you. It's, it's not as black and white as you, you're making it. So, uh, and I know, I think you got the Union Valley folks. Do you disagree with what I'm saying here?
Uh, somewhat.
Okay.
It is a.
Would you, you can go ahead and come up since you're an expert. Would have you come on us?
Just like, just like the incident that we had out here, that was a joint command between me and Terry. And we coordinated and worked everything out together.
Yeah, go ahead and get it under my, thank you so much for.
So, but I would suggest one thing, like he says, as far as the NIM service. And if you being the mayor, that you would be probably part of the joint commands system.
I was just with Vance simple the other day on a, on a false alarm fire. So when I hear those sirens, I'm out the door.
Well, as far as like he's talking about, like a natural, you know, natural catastrophe or something like a tornado or something as simple as a tanker rollover, that many resources are required. Uh, we already know who to contact in a lot of those situations, but since it's in your, you know, maybe since it's in your city limits, you might want to have a joint command with it so that way you're informed of everything in it. But being in that situation, you need to have the proper training. So the NIMs three hundred, four hundred would be more required as, as well as the more essential suggestions.
It's like.
But as far as the, uh, Terrell going into Hunt County and us coming over here, we've always had a mutual, mutual aid agreement. As a matter of fact, I talked with Terry, we got a box alarm system set up. Where the structured fires over here, they will automatically be toned out. First ones there will be in command until the others get there and we coordinate from there. See what I'm saying? So it's going to be a joint situation regardless who, which side of the line is in. It's just the first one there with the highest ring to take command.
Can you explain that better and not as?
Thank you. It, it helps to hear it a different way. So, um, thank you.
Chief, sir. And I think we've got into the weeds from this, but I, but I want to follow that up. You said it, but it's real clear. Y'all have mutual aid agreements.
Yes, sir.
There is no jurisdictional lines. It, this might be your city, but y'all have mutual aid agreements and if y'all aren't on the call, Terrell catches it.
Well, the mutual aid agreements that we have are, uh, we do have that system if we don't have enough manpower to cover another call.
Cause y'all brought in cash. I mean.
We run all, yes, all over, yes. But, uh, most of the time, once they tone us out, we'll notify them ahead of time and say, hey, we don't have additional personnel. Go ahead and contact Terrell, get him started and go from there. But our box alarm system is set up like for structured fire, rasp fires to get a quicker response there. Like Chief Simmons from the Cleveland Chisel, I talked with him, he's on our box alarm system. Cause he's closer on this end and like I talked with Chief Terry, he's closer on this end. The main thing is to get there quicker, you know, best response time. And that's what we're working for. As a matter of fact, Chief Terry said that he's going to try to implement a box alarm system from his side.
And is it a box one?
It's a box alarm system where you get multiple, multiple departments there. Instead of me getting there and then saying, hey, I need another department for help, it's automatically sent there. It's easier to send them home than to call them after we're there.
It's also something that probably automated mutual aid.
Yes.
You know, I'm talking about the NIMs three hundred, four hundred. I was actually going to ask about this because as far as I know, it's required to operate on the EOC, right? If there's such a thing. Is that something you would suggest just the mayor get or the mayor pro temp and the mayor or should we all receive that training?
All, all the council members should have the seven hundred, eight hundred, one hundred, two hundred. They're online.
We're all working on that. I think many of them, many of us have finished those.
The mayor, the mayor pro temp, your two top people should go to the classes and take the three hundred. Four hundred is really not that beneficial, especially small communities. But especially the three hundred, that's where you will actually get some hands-on experience and learn a lot more and get a better understanding.
Steve, in your opinion, uh, I know what your answer is. So natural catastrophe, we say we have a tornado or a massive flood, we have even wildfires. You set up the EOC, that's your job as emergency manager. Uh, and your job, just for clarification, is you're working on the logistics. You're talking to this, you know, the state for resources and all that. The role of council or emergency management on our side is at the EOC. It's not at the, the incident.
That is correct.
Because they'll also be required for the logistics and all that. So when we talk about responding to these incidents and stuff, I mean, we really need to be careful because.
Would y'all mind if I sit down?
No.
My back.
Not at all. There's a seat right there.
And typically, Steve, you're not going to respond to, to many incidents like this. I mean, that's not your job.
The, one the other day I responded to because it's a hazardous material field.
Okay.
And as the hazardous material officer for the county, I respond to all of them.
Typically, the only interaction we're going to have with this is a, a massive tornado or something like that. They're required to stay.
And you as the mayor or the mayor pro temp, whichever one's available, needs to come to the Emergency Operations Center. Because that's where the objectives are going to be laid out by the jurisdictional, uh, authority. Mayor of the city or county judge of a county. And so your place is in the EOC, making those high level decisions. And I call it the hundred thousand foot view because you're looking way up here. And your incident commander is down here. And your incident commander is down here, what I call the eighty thousand foot. And then your units that are actually in the field are probably down around the thirty thousand foot.
All right, let's do it.
So, uh, does that help you to understand?
Yes, thank you. And it's twenty fifteen. I was certificined. So it actually helped when I was going through these courses. Kind of get a.
We have a certain team of O C.
I've met them.
Uh, you can call the county. You want to get on that? We can make that happen for you.
I am not enough hats right now. Okay, I look forward to, to doing that. Steve, thank you.
Is there anything else I can help you on?
Uh, well, the next agenda item perhaps is, um, now is Chief Van Sickle here? Okay. And I wanted to give everyone opportunity. Um, and Richard Hill, is he here? Okay, but we didn't have the energy. Okay. Number two, discuss incident.
Well, hold on. I still have a few questions here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We're going to continue. But you mentioned funding as far as funding going through y'all and that's not definitely not with Hunt and Kaufman. Does that include mitigation funds if we wanted to install? I mean, we mentioned a tornado siren, something like that. Would that include mitigation even in Hunt County? If we were to implement something to prevent hazards?
For mitigation funding, you would have to be included on one of the mitigation, approved mitigation plans. And unfortunately, because of when your city was formed, we were not able to get you in on our plan. It, it had already been gone too far in the process. Pull it back and add you in. Now, at some point when I can, I will be glad to add you into our, our plan. But I've got to find out the process for that.
All right. Cause I know we talked on the phone that it might be until two thousand twenty-six, I think we said. So is it possible we might get it soon?
It's possible. We, we can get you in soon. Uh, I've got folks at the state looking at that portion.
I really appreciate that.
When did y'all pass the last mitigation plan?
It was approved pending adoption on December the sixteenth by FEMA.
And I saw the paper. You've got accolades for being the first county in the states or something for doing that upgrade, um, those timelines.
Uh, I don't know about that.
Thanks. Yeah, you read the paper.
But we do, we do try hard. The other types of funding are FEMA reimbursement, emergency actions. If you put out cones and barricades to block off the flooded roads. Uh, if your fire department goes out to rescue things like that, or emergency action can be reimbursed from FEMA after a disaster. Uh, repair to your roads is a reimbursable expense called category C. And we can get you money back on that. And that's why I kept calling, wanting your ordinance to make sure you had an approved, uh, program. And then we have to have one forty-seven. And y'all have to have NIM classes in order to receive that reimbursement fund.
The ordinance was passed in July.
These NIMs classes are kind of, they're kind of lengthy. So it's not the one hour, one and a half hour classes. These are quite involved. So for the, all four of them, I guess like twelve, fifteen hours maybe. So it, you know, it's quite the undertaking. It's not just a one-hour class. So, you know.
Yes, it's quite involved.
Yes.
But that's why when I said you have to work through a primary county so that all that information is done correctly and submitted correctly so that you can get that reimbursement. And therein, if the roads are in another county, that's where I call Richard and work with him to make sure there's no duplication. So that you get the maximum amount of reimbursement. And at the same time, you don't put something in twice and wind up having to pay it back.
That's important to know. Thank you. We do have a citizen, citizens, Bruce Seet signed up to talk on this item. Bruce Seet.
So on the red, I want to clarify.
Can you state your name and your address, please?
Uh, Bruce Seet, one oh two forty-one and fifteen sixty-five. That's right, I got it covered. So on the red, by the incident with the red, uh, Terrell was non-IC. I want to clarify that. I was IC, Terrell was, he asked where he was.
He said he might have, he should have had.
Uh, Terrell did come. He said, we need, I supplied you with LT. He got his crew to say LT. So that's part of the joint use of the command. Right, well, we got to cut those up. I do recommend, as I talked to him, that when they cut the fences, make sure to get the fences back together. There was an incident where the cows didn't get out. We have, our department did help get those, that was very, it was a shock fence.
Thank you. I know Hunt County is very, that they cut my fence from emergency, they did a good job. So thank you.
So, but for, for emergency management question would be, so the city is not all people's property. It's only point of the center road, like two feet off the road. So a tornado went through there, but it didn't really touch the city road. Where would that fall? I have no idea. Like tornado, or like a tornado.
Say, say that again, if I could understand.
So on the city limits, I'm not sure if you're aware, but the city limits is not the whole property. It's only the first couple of, two, three hundred feet.
It's three hundred, it's three hundred and eleven feet from the center road on most roads. And then, um.
So the house is not in city limits. I'm not sure how it falls.
It will, it will determine the department by which county it's in, if it's not in the city. So therefore, if it's in Kaufman County, then it would follow directly to Kaufman County and which is in Hunt County, to Hunt County. So it's still along the county lines.
Okay. So we may have to revisit this. Like I would like to meet with the E O C. And I think we're going to have to do a little bit more work on this. But I don't want to hold up our meeting for the people. There's a lot more agenda items to cover. So.
This could be a good workshop thing.
I think so. Yeah, there's, it's involved and, um, I think there's some things to iron out there. But we, we are very appreciative of all of our emergency management.
Is there anything, Mr. Mike?
I have a couple of things. I'll try to stick to the most important of those since it's true we have a lot on the agenda. Whenever I talk to the Texas Regional Hazard mitigation staff, I talk to Patrick Kelly and the board about a couple of things and the situation that you're talking about. And one of the things they mentioned is that we might be able to set up what they call the memorandum of understanding.
Yes, sir.
And that that would do pretty much the same thing as far as hazard mitigation and split between county bank board and us.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything else to know about that? I mean, is it work rules? Is something you've done before?
I've done a lot of them. Right now, uh, I work with our legal department and district attorney's office. Usually I will write them, send them to them so that, uh, in my words, they put them in legal leagues, make sure it's correct according to the law. And then send them back and they go out for adoption or signatures by the specific party. Uh, you've got, um, memorandums of understanding. You've got memorandums of agreement. And you've got your local agreements and mutual aid agreements. So there's a lot of difference, a lot of different things that you can do. And this is where the lawyer comes in to really explain the difference. Because if I try to do it, I'm just going to put you in the mud. You're not going to help.
Well, I appreciate that. I mean, that gives me some hope. Is there anything, just looking back, I always like to get kind of a feedback loop whenever I see a problem. Cause I would have loved to be able to get on your, just the, the plan that you were making that went through December fifteenth and that's going to be there for a while. We can get on sooner, you know, than twenty sixteen, great, but, I mean, twenty twenty-six, great, but. What should we have done different if there was anything or wasn't just timelines, the factors up?
Timelines, because the work on that started in January of twenty twenty. You're afraid me to come wrong. Y'all were actually, uh, when did y'all actually become a city?
We incorporated, uh, last November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, uh, officially. But no one was sworn in until May fifteenth.
Okay. So it was, it was the timeline. If you become a city a year early, it would have made all the difference in the world. And that's nobody's fault. It's just, that's just the way everything felt. And I'm, I'm trying to get y'all in because, because of that.
And Steve has been very proactive. I do appreciate. He was one of the first ones to reach out as mayor. Like, you need to do this, this. Like, okay, he called me. So appreciate that.
So thank you so much, Mr. Steve. I really appreciate that. That's clarified a lot for me specifically.
Well, my job is to help.
Okay. So we also have Chad West. Listen, Chad West, would you like to speak to this?
No, I said that you have to talk about financials.
Oh, there is no comment on that. That's not on an agenda item. I'm sorry. Um, okay. So number, um, two.
I didn't understand the way you wrote it that he wanted to talk about that one. I'm sorry, Chad. I don't know if we're allowed to go back and let him make a comment?
We cannot do comment on reports.
Okay.
It's not allowed.
Okay. So he wouldn't have a comment anyway?
There's no comments allowed on reports.
Okay, I didn't know that.
None at all. So. Okay. So number two, discuss and consider the national incident management system or NIMs training requirements, means and applications for the Poetry Town Council and Mayor for the four NIMs courses, IS one hundred, IS two hundred, IS seven hundred and IS eight hundred as directed by State Bureau Director E M C for the Kaufman County, Texas. Okay, so.
Um, real quick, Caroline, she's, can't hear. The lawyer can't hear a lot of the things that people are saying. So keep texting her all the, uh, text your questions. If you guys have any questions, text the lawyer.
And I guess I would ask, since I wonder, suggested that I, I was maybe sending. It's maybe more appropriate, given the time constraints, to have a workshop discussion on this. Cause I have taken off four courses and as Tara said, it was very difficult. But if you end up, my real question is, okay, what do I do with this? And that's not something we can get into today, I don't think. We just got too many items. And I just think the workshop would be appropriate and I'd make a motion. We have that for a workshop and it's really, what do we do now? Once we finish this, you know, your advice on other courses or programs or how we handle it. Like we had the recent one out here in front of the church for a major fire, for a major tornado. What do we do next using the NIMs methodology and everything else? But it's far more than we, it would overwhelm us, but they, we can get along, I think. So I'd make a motion. We, uh, put this on the agenda, Caroline, for another meeting as a workshop.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all is in favor?
Yeah.
And then ask us to. Okay, we do, um, we do have another, um, person. Bruce Seet, do you want to speak to that? He waves that, Chad West. Do you want to speak to that one? He's going to pass as well. Okay, uh, thank you, Steve. Okay, so number three, um, discuss the unsafe curve on FM fifteen sixty-five, um, with the town council and consider possible solutions with text dot. Um, we did have, um, when I was here, I did talk with several citizens and they were saying, this has been a problem for years. It's not just this incident. It happens at least two times a year. It's a motorcycle, a truck. And they just simply don't slow down at the posted forty miles per hour. I did reach out to.
For specifics, can you define which curve you're talking about?
The one right up here where the incident was on, on fifteen sixty-five, right up in front of the church. Um, so I did reach out to Noel, um, and I can't pronounce that last name, starts with P A R A, um, who is our, the representative for text dot. I have yet to hear back. I, uh, did send an additional email today. Um, hopefully we'll hear. I know after talking with Richard of Hunt County, um, Richard Hill, the emergency management coordinator there, he, um, he said, you know, they've done this where they've had either reflective, you know, put reflection strips around the speed limit or put, you know, additional striping on the road. There's a number of things to highlight that that can be done. So, um, that might also need, um, be part of the workshop. Who knows? Um, there's definitely some things that they can do.
You know, Tara, I take exception to dangerous curve in that I think if you take the curve at the right speed and you're not playing on Facebook, you can make it without any problem. I've done that curve for twenty-two years and I've done it at way above the posted speed. With the cows and the trailer and everything else, it's possible. I don't know what the guy in the tanker was doing, but he was flying. He was also top-heavy. You know, they're loading it to the fuel farm out of cattle mills. And they're trying to get to all those little mom and pop gas stations as quick as they can. And he was pushing it. So I would hate to see us. I, I agree with making it maybe more visible, making it more obvious that it's curved. But, you know, putting in speed bumps or trying to straighten the highway or something like that, I think it's probably out of bounds. You just, you know, people can screw up anything. And if you drive fast enough, um, you can end up in the wrong place. So I think it was driver error versus it was designed to make it.
No, I totally agree with that. Um, I, I'm, I'm so sorry. You're out of order. I'm so sorry. There's.
Yeah, it's, it's posted lower speed in both directions. Well, I, I guess I, I would suggest that text dot does have groups that study things like this. Maybe around Austin, but, uh, we're on safe curves and one option, and they do this from time to time. It's straighten, make the curve more of a, of a, less of a curve than it is. But you said Mike has years away before we can get that. But in the meantime, the text dot does have groups to study. And I think it's a first step is it needs to get before not just an engineer in Hunt County, but to the proper group in text dot who studies situations that are possibly dangerous just because of the other instances and what could be done. So if we're going to make a motion for something, that would be my motion. Get it to the right organization in text dot, not just an engineer, but the organization that studies these kind of things.
That's exactly what Richard said. And so when he sent me to the Noel, um, apparently that's part of that. They do the studies. He's done this. So he's speaking from experience.
So I guess we have the experts in the room. If we don't, if it, if you don't mind, chief, can you even guess to Mike how many wrecks you've made on this corner? This is yours, yours.
So he, Bruce, uh, oh, I'm sorry. Wayne.
Sir?
Okay. I, I don't want to put you too much on the spot, but can you just guess to Mike, how many wrecks you've made on this corner in the last ten years?
In the last ten years, I would say probably there's been, it's like six that I'm aware of as far as motorcycle cars. I think we had two outside the tanker rollover, two others inside that. So, or, you know, like you said, visibility wise, that's, that's the main thing.
Sure. I just wondered how dangerous it was.
Yeah. And then the, uh, you can text, talk to text out about the ripper. They did, did that drop the curse.
Thank you.
But I'll tell you one thing too, uh, fifteen, fifteen sixty-five and two seventy-six. We tried for years to get a red light up there. Notified text dot going through all the public channels. And we were informed that we had to reach a certain amount of fatalities before it was acceptable through text dot.
Cringe, cringe.
Yes, it's not acceptable, but that's the way they look at that. So.
Um, I sure hope we can be a little more proactive than that. But Bruce Seet, would you like, uh, you're signed up to. Um, I sure hope we can be a little more proactive than that, but Bruce, Steve, would you like, uh, you're signed up to speak to this?
For bad curves, uh, I would add on to my one deal with TextDOT on 96, where it hits down there. We've been in both accidents where we get called out, right, they're on the county line, but I'm sure with the dispatchers, whose it is, we don't see, we say, hey, it's Kaufman County. But we've been in more accidents than my five years, been out here for six years now, I've been, I'm seeing more accidents down 96 and 23, 26, I believe it is, right there. Uh, it's not much sign in the same day, and, uh, I've.
That's how you agree with me.
One motorcycle, for the turn here, maybe more signs that say you start a turn ahead, I don't want to see the signs, sharp turn.
I think the Robinsons would really appreciate that as well.
But for safe, it's pretty safe, I mean, if you have grass and a bench, nothing, a major brick wall, watch out for the brick fence, which is still waiting to turn. So that kind of helps out for nothing there, TextDOT's side of the guardrail, I think that'd be more dangerous, a guardrail, because of the motorcycle, he's going to be sliced up pretty good, it's not easy, so it's all.
Appreciate your expertise, Chad West, do you want to speak to this? Catherine Hardwood.
Catherine Hardwood, Catherine, 2430. I just encourage, please, get this in front of TextDOT, I think the whole, uh, TextDOT road system through poetry should have traffic studied. And they need to do it, and, you know, if they don't come back with the answers that they want, we'll just keep asking them, but we have to start it.
On that point, I have, I'm on a waiting list for university, um, study monitor, so I'm on the list, but the town is on the list, and so, um, we, um, welcome, so, um, we will hopefully get that soon, even if TextDOT doesn't come through with that. Okay, so on number three, do we have, um, on number three, do we have, um, any other discussion?
I guess Tara, is, is contacting the state about a study already underway?
Yes, yes, I don't miss that. Okay, number four, discuss and consider obtaining federal grants for obtaining a storm siren for the town. Um, so, we are a spread out town, and I received, um, kind of just a flyer on this, but I thought, you know what? That might be a really good thing for our town, they are expensive, but there are grants available for that, so, um, I was wondering if there might be, maybe even a committee that could help toward that goal, because there are significant grants, a lot of times they will have you, they give 75% and you have to come up with 25%. Um, but I think it's with a lot of the people out here who don't have good internet, and not even have good phone service, I think with as broad areas as we have, it might be a really proactive thing that we could do to help our citizens be aware. Uh, there's people out here that are off grid, that don't even have electricity, so, you know, it, it, um, I don't know, I'm just talking about it.
Tara, if we, if we do a committee on that, I would, we also consider the liability back to the town, because if we have an area siren and it malfunctions and somebody's killed, the town poetry is responsible for that. So I think taking that on is a little bit of a responsibility to the town as well, and I want to make sure that in addition to where we put it, out on the pole and how to get electric, we also understand what the implications are to the town poetry, you know, to test it, maintain it, make sure it works, make sure everybody knows what it means, when it goes off, so on and so forth.
Emily, can you speak to that?
So, I hope you guys can hear me, but typically it'll boost your town's safety rating, it's not like a fail of procurement that you have them. If you do have them, I'm sure you're responsible for maintaining them, so after doing so, would liability attack you?
So, what I read on the, the companies that install also do the maintenance. So you kind of have a retainer with them to keep the maintenance, is what mine, of course, I'm not an expert on that, but that's what I was given. So it might be something that a committee could investigate and, you know, go further on, uh, so do we have a motion to maybe form a committee for that? Or do we want to discuss that maybe at a workshop? Um, Chad West, would you like to speak to this?
No.
You know, the other thing I'd want to consider too on this for the committee, Tara, is what obligation we have back to whoever's funding this for us, right? Because typically when people give you something, they expect something in return. So I just want to make sure that we understand as a town, what our burden of fact is, whoever it is, whether it's federal government, state, county, et cetera, so we know kind of in advance, whether we're going to owe them, or if we're going to allow their nose into our tent, by the fact that we accepted their, whatever it is.
So, any other suggestion action for that one?
Yeah, this was, if I read the paperwork correctly, it is like a 90% grant, so they did 12% match, if I, if I read that correctly. So I mean, it's, it's, um, not huge on a per tower basis, because I think the average can end up like $7750, something like $800 per tower. So it was five, seven hundred and eighty bucks per tower, but they recommended eight towers, uh, excuse me, 10 towers for us. So this is getting into some, some real money, and, um, at this point, I'm still not sure that's where we need to be as a town. Um, we've survived pretty well with alcohol so far, um, now, I hate to jinx it, you know, it's like, okay, next time a tornado comes through, it's going to be Brian's fault. But, um, I just, uh, right now, I, as much as I'm an emergency management geek, I'm not sure that that's where we need to be focusing or not.
Well, I think the grant process is lengthy, so I think if we started with a committee, a committee now, it might be later that we can actually, you know, be a part of the recipient of that, and by that point, it might be, you know, something that we could afford.
I would, I would only add, as the only one up here that's ever tested a siren on a monthly basis, that these things can be done. So probably the most expensive part of any of this, and the committee will find this out, is not the initial expense, one we have to find, you know, volunteers, which I'm sure there's going to be some, says, yeah, I put it right beside my house, until they hear those 180 decibels squilling everyone. But, but I think the biggest problem with this is going to be the maintenance. Uh, in the small town I work in, and we have six, I can promise you that we have somebody out there, five to six times a year working on them. So, we need to be diligent, and if it's what the citizens want, we need to make sure with our limited budget, that it's something that we can maintain. It's not, we paid our 10%, we use them till they're done, and now there's just no moving out, so if we can't maintain them.
Okay, so, um, Emily, can we solicit from the audience, uh, people who would like to serve on a committee? Or do we need to talk, bring?
Yes.
Okay, so if they're.
Has the committee been formed?
Well, we haven't formed a committee, I guess we would need to make a motion to form a committee, to look at this.
Yes, and then you can name people in your.
Okay, is there a council member or two that would like to be on this committee?
You know, I'm more interested in discussing this further than the workshop discussion that we mentioned earlier, just get the opinion of more experts, and also give us more time to look into the funds and just this in general. I don't think there's any giant rush in something like this.
Okay, do we have a motion to postpone the workshop?
Sure, a motion to postpone until the next meeting and include it in the workshop on the agenda.
Okay, all those in favor, postponing to the workshop, and that passes unanimously. Uh, I'm sorry, Jack, seconded that. Okay, um, number five, discuss and consider a proposed road maintenance interlocal agreement, the ILA, between the town of Poetry and Kaufman County, as approved and signed by Kaufman County Judge Hal Richards on December 14th, 2021. So, um, I want to thank Councilmember Anderson for just, um, really doing the muscle work on this, um, and they did finally approve it, or, um, so is there any discussion on that?
From my read of it, it looked like it was the same thing that we had in Paton Street.
Well, I guess I just explained, Hunt County was very generous, they offered to do the work, and we only paid for materials and fuel. And Kaufman County would not do that, and in fact, their initial proposal was at exorbitant rates. And so what Tara was alluding to is, we looked at the, uh, Texas Transportation Code, and it says very clearly, they cannot charge exorbitant rates. They can only charge what their costs are, so what we did was propose a way of saying, okay, we'll pay the fuel and, and materials, or we'll provide it ourselves, which is what we had with Hunt County, but the, the equipment, we will pay at a depreciated rate, using straight line depreciation, which brings it down, costs down to really very reasonable rates, and that's what Tara and I are talking about. So at that point, we said, you know, we're not going to get any further with Kaufman County than that, but we did talk about it using the exorbitant rates, which were based on FEMA, which were national rates, and way above their costs, way above. So now we've got a straight line depreciation, and I've got a table I worked up, if anyone's interested, I can show you. But it brings, it brings their cost down to something that we think is, we can live with. And that's what's in Kaufman, and it's different for the Hunt, and it just goes to the two different counties.
And Kaufman has a lot more equipment, so I can understand that, they have new machinery, they have a really full machine that is operated by one individual, and it will fill all the poles, it'll clean it out, and put the, the tack material down, and it'll fill it, and it'll tamp it over. I mean, one, one person can run that, and that's a brand new machine, so that part, from that standpoint, is understandable, they have a lot more equipment than what Hunt has. Number, so Chad West, do you want to speak to this?
I guess just a simple question, since the terms of the agreements changed since the last time we discussed about it, we also go back and negotiate unlimited labor.
They cover labor.
Unlimited.
Did they cover unlimited labor?
Um, the wording. The wording is cost of labor, um, shall be calculated based on actual hourly rate of, uh, pay, excluding all other benefits received by the employee from the county, so it's just a straight number, and again, they have, um, so there, it is not unlimited labor.
I guess the one question I brought from one of the other meetings is Kaufman County has a set manpower. If you go through and break it down based on mile of Kaufman, they have half a person who's dedicated to doing potential road payments and publishing. So regardless of how much money we generate, even if we're just paying for fuel and material costs, at some point Kaufman County will have the labor to support it.
Well, the ILA was meant to say, to give us a dedicated, you know, service, that's what it's all about, is getting that dedicated service.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the discussion was had, so.
We're, we're glad to actually have this signed, we've been working on this for months, um, thank you.
Can, can you go into this, geez, I can't talk tonight, can you go into the specifics of dedicated labor? I mean, they're, they're not paying somebody 2,080 hours a year to work on our roads.
No, no.
The wording says, "Cost of labor shall be calculated based on actual hourly rate of pay, excluding all other benefits received by the employee from the county," in other words, we don't want any markups.
Right, no markups, no benefits, cool.
So if they pay.
Did they talk about the availability?
I'm sorry?
Did they talk about the availability of labor?
Oh, yeah, they said it's, that's something that's, they're going to have to work in. So they won't commit to putting us first on the list, obviously, we're going to be down below their other needs. And that's something we're going to have to negotiate at that time, once we start getting revenues and doing this. And by the way, the machine Tara was talking about, what they told us, it's, it costs roughly $200,000, it's one man operates it. They told us that's very cost effective, because you only have to pay for one person, and then secondly, if you take that straight line depreciation, 15 years, which is an IRS number, and they agreed to it, uh, it comes out to a daily cost of about $50 a day, or about $6 an hour, six and a half an hour, so.
Plus the operator.
I'm sorry?
Plus, plus the operator.
Plus the operator, right.
That's a pretty good answer.
And fuel and materials, which we can supply, or we can use from them. So that was after quite a bit of discussion with them, and that's about as good as we could get, so we thought we should take it.
Thank you.
I've never seen a road project with one person on it.
So, do we have a motion to approve this ILA agreement with Kaufman County? They have signed it.
I'm moving to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and it's been seconded to approve the interlocal agreement made with, um, between the town of Poetry and Kaufman County, as approved, all those in favor, and that passes unanimously. Okay, number six, oh, okay, we want to take a five minute recess.
Hey, Josh? Josh, can we, can we do a quick sound check before we get going? At bright, people sitting back, they couldn't hear, I know you moved the speaker, can we just, can Tara?
Okay, what he's saying, it has to be calibrated for the room?
Yeah.
You've got Mary Tenny.
Okay, so we're resuming our agenda item number six, discuss and consider the road, uh, maintenance ILA project sheet number one, the amount of S, initial escrow, and how to determine areas of priority for forage trimming. So when we were having these agreements, um, they all said, well, the winter is when we do the forage trimming, and the, we would primarily have to pay for the fuel, so that is actually, um, less, um, um, less costly than some of the other things, so I thought. So I thought we might attack that first with this first and kind of... So we have a form that I designed in part with Kaufman County, which they use, and so we amended it. And so that is in the packet. There's a sample. It is a legal size. It does have, I think Emily suggested we have the numbers, and that's why we put the numbers. So it is a legal-sized form. And this is just a sample. It has a separate written approval, and then it gives... The proposed project is for Hunt County, for example, R and B Precinct Number Two, description of project, the exact project location, material, equipment, labor hours, et cetera, to be used on the project, approximate start date, approximate completion date, cost of project. And it says to be paid into an escrow account with the county before the start date of the above-described project. It is mutually understood that no additional products will be performed for any entities that owe outstanding projects to Hunt County. And then it's signed by the judge and approved by the town. So is there any discussion on numbers on this item? And then we have a similar one for Kaufman County.
So do we have the... Have the counties looked at this, or they're okay with this? Does it include everything they need?
So Kaufman County actually provided the template for this, and I just revised that. And then Hunt County, I said, yeah, I have given them a copy of it, and they were... They seemed to be fine with that.
Okay, so I'm not understanding exactly what we're discussing here, because the agenda item says "discuss and consider road maintenance ILA project sheet number one, amount of initial escrow and how to determine areas of priority."
I can't understand.
I'm sorry?
Can you...
And...
It's just a bubble.
I was reading number six, if you'd like to follow.
There's probably some geezers like me that hear it.
I asked a geezer questions of the guys I work with today, so I get it. But I was just reading number six, and I'm trying to figure out, are we discussing the form? Or are we discussing the amounts to go on the form?
Yeah, we were deciding the initial amount of escrow. Do you want it $500? Do you want $1,000? Do you want it $2,000? What is the initial escrow so that they can actually get to work on trimming the forage and the trees for our town? This would be the initial project that...
For Hunt County.
Well, for either county, because we, again, we've already passed the ILL for Hunt County. We've just tonight passed the ILA for Kaufman County. So now we can actually put them to work. And but it requires this project sheet, an initial escrow amount for them to do that.
Okay, I guess I would approach it backwards, then, because I would try to figure out what we want done, and then figure out how much that's going to cost, rather than how much we want to set aside and then point out what we want done.
Well, we need to, and that's why this is on here, determine the areas, the priority areas, and how we would do that. But I mean, an escrow account, they just hold it, and then they use what they have. But that's, each one requires kind of an escrow account, so you just, you give them a number. But you're right, we do need to determine...
Some of my concern there is...
The areas of priority.
You said, put it in an escrow account. Great. But the escrow account is dependent on the, this form. And on the form, it says it's mutually understood that no additional projects will be performed for any entities that owe outstanding projects, cost to Hunt County, Kaufman County on Kaufman's side. So I mean, it's, I just, I want to make sure that when we're setting aside money, we know what we're setting it aside for specifically.
Okay, so my understanding is, so say we give them an escrow account of $1,000 each county, then the project might only be, you know, $450. So that means, you know, we have $650 left in that escrow account, and so the next project, we wouldn't have to submit another amount. They could, if it wasn't over $650, they would still have money in that account.
So do we already have a list, though? So you're talking about trimming ditches and things, right?
Trimming, you know, trees, trimming the grass. That is what we've been told, is they do a lot of times this time of year. So in that, kind of to test the waters a little bit, we do need some of that. But how do we determine? You know, I don't want to just say, go out and do this. How do we, and then we need to discuss this, is how do we determine which areas need it most for the forage trimming?
I mean, I would think our road crew would probably be most expert at knowing what the sides of the roads look like, since they run up and down them. I don't want to burden them anymore. But, you know, to me, it'd be nice, kind of the way we're trying to rate and rank the roads and pavement condition, to do that with ditches and not just pay them to come out and clean up ditches that aren't bad, but if we have some areas where trees are hanging over and trucks are starting to hit them or something like that, you know?
Now, there was a proposal that council members take so many feet, or so many roads, and divide and conquer, so that, you know, you report certain roads. If you see a trouble spot, then let's spread the wealth of tasks at hand, and then you report back maybe? And that was one suggestion.
Well, basically, what we were told, both Hunt and Kaufman, is this is what they do in the winter, when they can't be doing asphalt or the crushed concrete. So they keep the crews busy doing that, and presumably, it would be seasonal for us as well. Now, when it comes to the asphalt and making those repairs, that's where Marty Murphy and I can't remember the other...
Dan, Dan Thompson.
Yeah, Dan Thompson, that are designated as our experts. We would get them involved in this on the asphalt and the roadside, is what is a reasonable cost? What are they doing? Where do we really need it? And how do we rank where we want to go first? So we would be getting them involved once we start into that. And we might have several of these kind of worksheets, where we're trying to figure out, what do we do first, and what do we do second, and they're separate projects. So we would be getting help on that. The ditches and trees, I don't know that they would be the ones to help us on that. As you said, the road crew, and there's others that can do that. But that would be a winter job, where the summer, spring, summer, fall would be the asphalt. And that's where we see, we would probably get in in a bigger way. By the way, Kaufman County, we're probably going to be looking at using that machine that is one person operating it. They told us it does a much better job than their road crews. And the way it works, because it puts down hot asphalt, puts down concrete, cleans it out, puts down crushed concrete, and then they put it on the asphalt, and then they roll it. So with that, we would need some help from Marty Murphy and Dan Thompson, I think, to get estimates on that.
Well, on the, excuse me, Tom, on the forage, Kaufman County also has the machine that clean cuts better on the trees. It doesn't tear 'em all, or stuff like that. It apparently makes them look better. So I guess we need to determine how we prioritize that. Do we have something on the website that people can, you know, report in? Or do we divide and conquer, as has been suggested to me? Do we, I mean, I think we need to, or do we...
We have had a report already. There's five oak trees that are dead. I forget what street it is, but I can find it. We talked about it a few months ago. So if we wanted Hunt County to come out and cut down five trees, what's that going to cost?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer for it.
It's in, I'm reluctant to set money into an escrow account and remove it from our availability, in case we need some. Because once we put it in an escrow account, we can't touch it. That's the point of the escrow.
Well, I mean, we're going to have to address the roads and forage. I mean, we have, half of our budget is allotted for roads and the care of them, and this is part of that. And we have to get this ball rolling. I mean, at some point, we can't just be so skittish that we're not going to move forward.
All I'm saying is, let's ask them for an estimate of how much it's going to cut down, how much it'll take to cut down the five trees. We'd set that aside in an escrow account, and we have them cut down the five trees. That gets the ball rolling, so we see how this process works.
I think you're thinking that we just put escrow in per project, and that's not quite how they do it. They want to know that, they don't want to have to deal with that every single project. Does that make sense? Is at least...
It makes sense for them. I'm not sure it makes sense for us.
So, but again, I think that, like you said initially, the priority here seems to be, how do we determine which forage gets priority? So I, do we have a motion on how to handle the prioritization of the forage trimming?
How much have we looked at the county for this? Because I'd be interested first to see how much they estimate, because they've been doing this for so long. I mean, they're also the ones that have done escrow accounts with other cities. Did they make a suggestion, how much we should put in there? Did they have a thought? How much do they spend on their side per year for maintenance right now?
Well, Deborah Bonner did suggest, I think she said $1,000 or $2,000 is an initial escrow amount. That is, Deborah Bonner is the attorney with Kaufman, one of them.
Do we know how much they were paying per year to maintain? I'm thinking specifically of the trees and the trimming of that and the mowing.
Well, Sim, there's two different, there's different costs. Kaufman County, they don't charge themselves for their material. That's a fixed cost they depreciate. For us, the cost is the labor plus the depreciated equipment cost, so we'd have to roll that in. So whatever Kaufman charges themselves, maybe less, and also depending on how they count their salaries, if they count benefits or not. And we told them, we don't want benefits. We just want straight salaries, and we'll pay depreciated costs for equipment. So it's really, I think, apples and oranges type comparison. So it's hard to say until we actually start doing it, but I do say, we are going to have to do some homework initially, when we're trying to get this system set up. And we don't have a system set up now.
So may I make a motion that we have Secretary Caroline divide up the town roads and dole it out to each one of the council and myself to go visit and see, prioritize those areas in, you know, the most hazardous areas, and that way, we can divide and conquer.
I don't think you can make the motion, but I think you can assign your employee...
No, I can. I can make a motion.
Okay.
Yeah. I just can't second it.
So that's subjective. I might not think that your road needs to be trimmed, so why wouldn't we do what we've done with the road report and have that spot on the webpage? And if someone on their road thinks their road needs to be trimmed, then at that point, either the road committee or one of us could go by there and look at it. But it's really going to be subjective. I might like a lot more trees hanging over the road than Brian or Mike.
Well, I mean, anybody who reports is kind of subjective. I mean, that's with anybody. I just thought that instead of putting it on the roads team, because they already have so much to do...
Let the citizens tell us.
Well, and that's great, except for, it's kind of slow, like it's behind the ball a little bit, I think, on that. You know, not everybody will do that. They'll come in and maybe ask me to do it, which I don't mind doing, but it's, again, you know, let's spread the task around, is what I'm suggesting here.
Tara, as the only person in Kaufman County here, I will take Kaufman County and drive each road of Kaufman County.
Okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Well, if I'm going to volunteer, me, I'll volunteer you. I second.
What's the motion?
The motion is that we have Secretary Caroline divide up the town roads equally or thereabouts among those of us sitting at this table, and that we go drive those roads and determine the high priority items for the forage trimming. That would be the, both the high brush as well as overhanging trees. And then maybe we come back and discuss it at a workshop or something, but...
So I second it.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion on the table, raise your hand. All right, and that passes unanimously. Okay, number six. Ashley French, do you want to speak to this?
I've got a long statement.
Chad West, did you want to speak? Your name is on this, too. Okay. All right. Number seven. Discuss updates received from the comptroller's office concerning the implementation of the 2% sales and use tax for street maintenance. So Secretary Caroline put together a nice sheet here explaining what's happened. Caroline, would you mind reading that off? Sorry if I put you on the spot.
You want me to read the whole thing?
You can paraphrase it.
Okay. My, I might have to borrow someone's printed. My internet is not wanting to pull up.
Just give everyone.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so I reached out to the comptroller early in December, didn't hear back from anyone until December 17th. I was able to return their call the next week, and they were out for the holidays. So, long story short, didn't get in touch with an actual person until early January 3rd. I finally got in touch with Aubrey. She was very helpful, and she gave us details of all the things that we would need to get the ball rolling. So I sent her all of the requested materials the week of January 3rd, and she informed me that it likely would not be implemented until July, because we need to get a GNIS code, and that has to go to the census and get approved. So she had all of the materials requested that she needed, except for county court commissioner minutes from the day that our incorporation articles were signed. And I just got a copy of those from the county court today. So tomorrow, I'll be making a copy of those to give to her. But that is where we are at, is that we are having to wait on the census to approve everything. And starting tomorrow, they will have everything they have asked for, but that is where it is, is that it's going to take about two to three months, according to her, to receive the designation code from the census. So that's what we're waiting on.
So it's pretty complex. It's more complicated than I initially realized. They do get involved with the Census Bureau. They want, they have a copy of our map. They want to understand the map. They want to have, you know, every possible document that they need to verify everything. So unfortunately, I was, unfortunately, it's going to take a while, and...
So what, for the businesses in Poetry that would have to pay this sales tax, what's our good-faith guess as to when they're going to have to start paying taxes? Are they going to be liable for the whole calendar year? Or they're not going to start paying until the state gets their act together?
The state will have to notify, the state will, and that's one thing we did, a point of clarification, is I'm like, am I supposed to write a letter? What's supposed to happen? And they said, no, they will reach out to all the businesses and do their due diligence to notify them in ample time to get, you know, and I'm going to get one of those as a business owner, too. So in order to get the systems changed, to actually collect that 2% sales tax on our...
So how does that affect, we made some estimates last year as to sales tax revenues, and I don't think we expected to start collecting until sometime into the year.
Right. We didn't, but we didn't think it would be July. So...
So do we need to have a bake sale, or are we going to run short?
That's not, yeah, we're, well, we just want, and of course, that's all for street maintenance, and thanks to our volunteer roads team, they're kind of keeping it, you know, trying to keep abreast of a lot of the potholes, so they're still helping out in this interim. We're very grateful to that. So it just basically decimates the budget for street maintenance, but, you know, we thought that maybe March, I think, March, April, we might be getting some funds. So that was kind of where that estimate was coming from, but that's unfortunately pushed back. It's out of our hands on that.
Tara, for a point of clarification, when y'all speak to them again, or in emails, it looks like they're concerned about our city limits. So can we go ahead and ask the question, what happens behind 311 feet? The ones I'm concerned about is Portry Springs, they have two venues there. So are they taxed on the front building, not the back building? And the second question is that, if it is just taxable on the 311 feet, I think we're going to invite our businesses to set their doorstep at 312 feet. So let's see if we can get some clarification of that.
So she did understand our map. She said, although it was unconventional, they do have other cities that have that type of design, believe it or not. And so she did understand it. She just wanted to, so she did, we did call, I did call her back and talk with her, and she was like, okay, I thought that's what it was. I just wanted to clarify. But my understanding is that, you've mentioned the Springs Event Center, is that, yes, it would just be the initial event center, but not the one behind there. But that would be a good question to specifically ask her. I was not taking into effect both of the venues, only the, only the front one. So. Chad, did you want to speak to this?
I guess my question is similar to Mike's. I guess, will there be a list of the actual businesses that are obligated to pay this sales tax? As well as, how does the town plan on, I guess, maintaining this list going forward of new businesses that may move in?
We don't maintain that. The comptroller office does. And so, if a business owner is, I guess, ethical, they will send in, they will get their notification. Anytime you start a business, they'll, you know, they send that out to you, business owners, and you have to do your due diligence and you would have to either file quarterly or file monthly, depending on the size, volume of your business.
It'll be based on your sales and use tax certificate.
Okay. So, will that list be available to the town and will it be available to the census?
Well, I, I don't know yet. I imagine they have to send us a list of some sort, but, you know, that's all uncharted territory, so that I don't know.
Same for me. I just wanted to.
No, that's a good point. I hope we do, but I don't know. Okay. Let's move on to number eight. Discuss complaints and possible solutions to the noise, dust, possible water contamination and drainage problems caused by the sand pit slash rock crushing pit located at FM 1565. Now, I just want to say here, as a business owner myself, I applaud business owners who do an excellent job and are of benefit to our surrounding areas. I appreciate entrepreneur, the entrepreneurial spirit. In the spirit of transparency, we just want to have an open discussion here. The number of complaints, I have received complaints over the summer, a few, but since December, they've escalated. This is not an attack whatsoever on any business within our midst, but merely a saying, "Let's come to the table and talk about how we might have some common ground." I don't, you know, we want to hear the people. They have a right to speak. So, and after studying our NIMs courses, I'm reminded that one of my main charges as mayor is for public safety. So, I believe it would be negligent on my behalf to simply ignore the complaints for safety. And so, that's why we're going to hear from the people.
So, just for clarification, for those in the room who don't know, Tara, is that in the city limits or not in the city limits?
Okay, so, looking at the map, there is a section of the sand pit slash rock quarry, whatever it is now, that is in the town limits, and it backs up right along, in the backyard of many of our residents who are in the town limits. And so, that's why you have the grind there, I think, is, you know, there, there, I mean, and we have to look at it. How would we feel if we had all that noise and the dust in our backyard? So, trying to be empathetic to them, but also respecting the rights of a, of a business owner, I think we can come to some sort of hopeful meeting of minds and, and let's come to some sort of, you know, consensus here.
Well, I'm hopeful, once you fix this, you can come fix the wedding venue, because they're in my backyard. And if I hear one more polka or Spanish wedding theme, I'm going to go postal. So, you can come help me when you get done helping these people.
Well, it's not just, it's not just the noise that have been the complaints. If it were just that, then we wouldn't be discussing.
Well, I have a complaint on the other. My cows are eating their stupid balloons if they keep turning loose, and I'm going to lose cows.
Well, that can be an issue, maybe, and maybe they would, the proactive response there would say, "Hey, please, no balloons."
Right.
I think that it's, we definitely need to hear the complaints of our citizens, but we also need to make sure that any suggested fixes we have apply to the town and, and not more broadly.
And I have a question on that. Is, is, I'm not clear, is the, the rock crushing or concrete crushing, I believe that's underway, but what, are they still digging out sand? Or what is actually going on? Because I, because it looks to me like the rock crushing is further back than 300 feet where the concrete crushing.
So, my understanding is that we have, the, the sand is somewhat depleted, but we'll hear from, hopefully, we'll hear from the owner. I did call one of the foremen, that's the only number I had, and asked them to please show. Again, this is not an attack of any kind. This is just to, let's talk about it with open transparency, not rumor mill, not any of that. So, but I would like to hear from our people. And actually, is the owner here?
Chancellor.
Okay, okay. Chad, would you like to speak to that?
I want to hear what you have to say.
Okay, okay. Yes, sir. Okay, so, Herbert Fletcher. Herbert Fletcher.
I don't know.
You want to pass?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, Bob and Donna Muma. Bob and Donna Muma.
I'm Donna Muma. I live at 10623 County Road 2450. Our property backs up to the sand pit. We've been there over seven years. So, I'm used to, you know, sand movement and everything, the country living. But I wanted to bring attention to the rock crushing that's been going on, the concrete and the dust that, you know, I've had several photos, videos. The videos show more of, of the air quality, the bad air quality that floats across our properties, across 1565. So, it travels. So, I don't know if y'all can see this very well, but it's dust, and it's not just right at the pressure. Video shows it way up above and it floats. And, you know, we're out there with.
A little bump in the road.
Oh, sorry, sorry. But this just is one photo that I have, and I have many videos. It just shows the dust way up high. And it, and when the wind's blowing, it just, it just moves across. And then it comes, depending on, you know, it's over ours, it's over another neighbor's or over 1565. So, I just wanted to, you know, make people aware, you know. I know we're grapping about it, but maybe you're not seeing what we're seeing, you know, because it is in a hole. But this is directly behind my house. So, they have, the new owners have recently put up a berm directly behind our fence, practically touching the fence in some places. But, you know, it's going to help the noise, but I don't know their plans, but just below this berm, they've built a road. So, my question is, you know, what's going to happen in the future with this road? Is it going to have dump trucks, you know, coming in and out versus the main entrance on the other side? We just kind of want some answers as far as that goes. For this, also environmentally, this is over the aquifer, right in the center, and so, we're concerned about that.
Do you have a picture of that? That you can?
I do. Our road, I'm going to point to it here. Our road is right here. And that's, that's actually right where the, the sand pit's located. You can actually see the water in this picture. Yeah, okay. Well, anyway, I just, I just wanted everyone to be aware.
Yeah, that is the Nakatosh Aquifer. And so, that's only what, at 60 feet or 100 feet, something like that? So, that actually supplies all the well waters for the, the region and the south, and the south of us for hundreds of miles. So, that is, you know, that is significant, I think, to, for us to concern, you know, consider. We want to be good stewards, certainly as a town, and just for public safety, I would think. So, is there, did your husband want to speak?
Yeah.
It's not husband.
My concern is not only for, you know, the present. You know, we moved to poetry for the quiet, peaceful town that it was. At this point, dusk, not right now, because they, I guess they've moved out, and I'm not sure what the, the long-term plan is, but it was from sunup to sundown every day and Saturdays, the pounding of the concrete and the dust and the noise. And that's not the quiet poetry that we, we moved to. And I'm not opposed to, to business. I know the businesses are there to make money and, and do the things that they do. But I think at the very minimum, there should be some kind of a water spray or some, some type of, of a system to keep the dust down. Our house is, is a newer house, and there are several newer houses in the area that the houses are built tight, and they have outside air ducts that the furnaces pull the air into the houses to, to ventilate, because the houses are so tight and, you know, you have this dust flying around. You can imagine what it does to your house. That's short-term, but long-term, I'm just wondering if, if the city or who's in charge of okaying things that are done in the pit, what's going to be happening there down the road? I don't know if there's anything that, that has been said about that, but that, that's something that we've been wondering also. So, it's just not, it's not the quiet place that we were used to. And like I said, it's not happening right now, but I don't know what the plan is.
Could I ask, how long has it been going or was it going? When did it start? When did it stop? Kind of thing.
What's it been, about a year? Probably about, about a year, I, I think, in the past year.
So, Bob, how long have you lived in poetry?
Seven, eight years.
And when you first moved to poetry, there was no activity going on?
No, there was nothing there at all.
No, they've been digging dirt there for over 20 years.
Yeah, but they hadn't dug, they were shut down for quite a while. They, they dug there for quite a while, but it, it was shut down.
So, wasn't, I have an impression that the sand pit had been exhausted, but.
No.
Okay.
Okay, so, it's been in business. It's been going on for approximately a year. When, about when did it stop?
Yeah, the, probably the last year. And it wasn't steady until the last, probably few months, last, oh gosh, I guess, what, the last two, three months, that, that it got really steady all the time. But the sand pit, when we moved here, was shut down. There was nothing going on there at all.
Okay, so, you didn't start, you've lived here seven years, there was quiet, and then over the last year, you've been noticing tremendous noise. Okay. All right. Okay, thank you, Bob and Donna Muma. Okay, William Sneed. William Sneed.
I live at County Road 2450, just around the corner. I'm Donna and Bob's neighbor. And as well as, I have a problem with the berm. The reason why I have a problem with it is because we didn't, we didn't even notice about why the berm was going in, and we weren't asked how it was going to affect our property. And that's my main concern, is how it is going to affect my property. So, when the berm started going up, I don't know, right after Christmas, I reached out to the owners, I guess his, his, one of his guys that works for him.
Robert.
Robert. And he came out and took a look along with Mr. Jeff. And, you know, I explained my concerns about the berm and the height of it and the steepness of it and the fact that it's loose dirt. So, I don't, I'm not an archaeologist. I'm not a dirt, you know, person that knows all about dirt, but I do know gravity. And when, if it rains, that dirt is going to move. And the way it's set, it's going to move on to our property. There's no doubt about it. So, what I want to know is, is how the owner is going to prevent that from happening. Because me personally, I have a barn back there that I have livestock in, and that, that berm bats up to my property. It hits my fence. And I was told that there was nothing we could do about it, and that, that berm would go up and, and it would stay indefinitely. When I talked to Mr. Herman, he said that he would, he cut a groove out of it right beside my barn because it was going to rain that night. And I had concerns of it raining all night. So, my question is, if he, if he was so sure that this was going to be, you know, it wasn't going to flood our properties, it wasn't going to be an incident, then why would he carve a big hole in a 20-foot pile of dirt to make sure that it wasn't going to flood my property? And then five days later, pile it back up again? So, I mean, I understand that the business owner is our neighbor, and this is not being very neighborly. We all could have voiced our concerns, and I'm almost a metal. But instead, he's done what he's done, and we've got to deal with it. So, the way I'm looking at it is, my dirt is going to start moving as soon as we get in the rainy season.
So, for clarification, there is a picture, I think.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that, okay.
This is the way it looks now, and it's worse.
So, that's against all the, my understanding is against all the homeowners, fence lot rows. That's in their backyard.
That's in my backyard. And as soon as it rains, that dirt is going to move because it's not packed. And another question I have is, is how's it going to be maintained? It's not packed, it's on a very steep incline. So, I mean, I understand that they piled this dirt up, but how's it, how's it going to stay there? And when, when the weeds and the trees and all that stuff come, we don't even have enough energy.
Oh, I'm sorry, William, your three minutes is, thank you.
Could I ask him a clarifying question?
I think you can, yeah.
So, do you know, is your land, I know it's right across your fence, are you uphill, downhill, or level?
We have a slight incline coming from this one, or decline.
So, from their property to yours, or?
From 1565, going, that's where there's a decline line down all the way on our property.
So, declines.
So, you would be slightly downhill.
So, you're very concerned about that? Okay.
More encouraged off the last one pit.
Okay. Okay. And so, perhaps, there's erosion control measures that, that might be taken, maybe?
They could, yes, they'll.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Judy Graham. Judy Graham.
Judy Graham. I live on 2450, and we've been there about six years now. When it was just the sand pit. And I know that they had tried to be crushing concrete, rock, whatever, several years ago. And a lot of the property owners were able to stop that because of the distance that the rock crusher was going to be from the properties.
I think it's 400 feet. If, I read the regulation, it's 400 feet from a residential area.
Yeah, so, nothing's changed since then, so I don't know how they were able to start doing it within, I'd say about the last year and a half. So, that's my, part of mine is the noise. It's just the noise, the rock crusher. And the other thing is, we've had so many trucks. Our road is a cul-de-sac that's dead end, and we get a lot of trucks coming down that are looking for the sand pit. And I don't understand why. We've put up signs that say, "No thoroughfare," or "Dead end," and somehow, they've been taken down. Or speed limit signs have been painted over. So, it's just, when those trucks come down, they have to come to the very end to turn around, and that's another trip out that they have to make. And so, it's just, plus, they've built a road right behind our property, several of our properties, that their trucks are running all the time up and down there. And my next door, he's, he's not here, but, I mean, it's almost right up to his fence. So, I don't know if there's a certain distance that they're supposed to stay away, but that's my concerns.
Thank you, Judy.
Just real quick, Judy, is your, your fence is the property, on the property line between your property?
And so, it's just, plus, they've built a road right behind our property, several of our properties, that their trucks are running all the time up and down there. And my next door, he's not here, but, I mean, it's almost right up to his fence. So, I don't know if there's a certain distance that they're supposed to stay away, but that's my concerns.
Thank you, Judy.
Just real quick, Judy, is your fence is the property, on the property line? Between your property and their property? There's not a, you're?
Fortunately for us, the berm is there. But at that one corner by the neighbor's, it's pretty level, and it is right up next to that.
Okay, and do you know if there's any weight-zoned bridges on your road?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Graham. So, you were part of the efforts to stop the last round of crushers, and I get that. Did y'all contact TCEQ last time?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And did anybody reach out to them this time, to see if they were in violation?
Uh, I'm not sure this time. I haven't, I haven't been involved.
'Cause I'm just as much involved in the city, and I want clean air too. So, we gotta make sure everybody's following the right rules. And last time, that company was unable to get their permits because, because they couldn't meet the standards. But somehow, this company got there.
Right.
So I was just wondering if any of y'all have reached out to TCEQ?
And we did at one time, called them. And we were told that, you know, they had a, it seems like a temporary permit, but they were limited to so many hours per month. They just couldn't be more than a couple of days in a row. And, I mean, we had, we had a lot of noise out here at 4:00 o'clock in the morning. I mean, they'll wake you up.
Oh, wow.
So, but then I noticed, your sign's being taken down. So, are there new owners? Is it the same owner?
I, I, I found out from the mothers that, well, and then researching that, I think it, new owner took over December 10th, is that correct? Or 12, something like that?
And is it still gonna be?
Well, that is, I guess we'll hear from the owner, because I haven't, I don't know. So, okay, London Baugh, London.
Hi, I'm London. I'm actually two houses down from Judy. I've only lived here about two years. When I first moved in, there wasn't much action that was happening back there. Of course, there was some beeping from construction vehicles, you know, I can deal with that. But I would say in the last year or so, it completely ramped up. I worked from home, it was interrupting my meetings. I had people say they couldn't hear me, because it was so loud. My house is about 500 feet from my back property line, which is directly, it's their property line as well. I did a Dust Bowl reading in October, because it was so bad. And I took a reading from my porch, which is about 550 feet from my back property line. And I took it also at my property line. My porch was reading about 95. Back property line was reading about 120. And I could see the trucks from my back property line. And mind you, I do have a berm that is right there that's been existing, but that doesn't help. So, my problem is the noise. You know, I'm still many feet away, but I'm still able to hear it through my house while I'm on meetings. Additionally, I have a problem with the dust. I've recently gotten an air purifier that tells me the parts per million, what have you, that's in my air. It is consistently at mid-level. So, and they haven't even been working the last two weeks, but I cannot get it to a good blue, which it should be. We're at about 60 to 70 parts per million constantly. And again, I'm not even right next to the back fence, but, you know, it's, it's, I think that there probably is an air quality problem. I mean, I've just got one of those, I don't know, a couple hundred dollar air filter, or air purifier that's telling me this. I'm, maybe we should get some studies. I'm not sure to really determine what the air quality is outside versus inside, but it's definitely a problem.
And that's inside your home, that it's?
It's in my home, in my living room. So, I don't know if anyone else on my road has anything similar that can?
Do you keep your windows open?
No, never.
With the windows shut?
I'd have to dust every couple hours, so.
So, seeing that you don't have screens or anything?
No.
So with your windows, doors shut?
Yes.
The air quality is still not in the blue safe zone?
No. So, and I've had it for three months, this air purifier detector, so.
You said that there was a berm?
I'm sorry?
You said there's a berm?
Yes, that they had built, I guess, built up on the other side of my property. It's right up against, oh, and, so, I put a fence up about six months after I moved in, but before that, it was just open. So, my husband and I would walk back there. And right past the berm, they, I mean, I'm telling you, from me to you, from that berm, they have dug a trench that's maybe 60 feet.
60 feet deep?
Yes. And it's about as wide as maybe from me to this wall, just straight down.
Do you have young children?
No, no. Thankfully, I have a fence. But, yeah, so that is also right there.
Thank you, London, your time, time has expired.
I too moved to Poetry seven years ago. And when I moved to Poetry, I moved for the quiet. And now, I've got an industrial business lit next to my property. But yet, I've complained about that before, and it's never once been addressed by the council. So why isn't?
Point of order, we're not talking about that tonight.
Well, my question is, is how is it that we, how is it that complaints get put on the agenda?
You can, you can certainly request that.
I've been, I've been in this meeting multiple times and made multiple complaints about Longhorn bringing commercial trucks out of 323.
But it hasn't been 10 to 12 people, you're the only complaint that I've received.
So, are, do you have 10 to 12 people in writing?
You can see, well, it's confidential, you're not able to see that. But yes, I've been hearing these complaints, and it's ramped up in the last month.
But it appears that the complaints of other citizens don't get heard.
So if there were 10 to 12 regarding the Longhorn, I would absolutely bring that up. There have not been.
So how many, is there a minimum number now established of how many complaints?
Chad, any of the, any of the council could put something on the agenda. If you'll send me what you want, I will put it on the agenda.
That is absolutely correct.
We'll have a conference. It doesn't require a certain number of people.
Okay, so.
Is that all the citizens?
That is all the citizens. Do we wanna hear from?
Well, I wanna make one comment, just. You briefly mentioned that's in the city limits parts of it, and you were correct. And I showed Tom as well. Without a GIS scale, it appears maybe a half acre on the southeast corner, and maybe, I don't know, 1,000 square feet on the southwest corner. So my question to council, I think we should always hear and help our citizens any way we can. But I just wanna make sure we don't back ourselves into a corner and start defending them and saying, "Yeah, we need to do air quality checks and all that." The state has resources to use. TCEQ would be the one I would first tell y'all to reach out to. But I just caution us on getting in between. I hate that y'all have a berm behind your property. And if that dirt encroaches on your property, well, then you have a right to do it, right? But I don't think, I'm just looking at this map, y'all, and there's one piece of property that actually touches with the new owner's property that's in the city limits. So, everybody else, it's the rural property that stayed outside the city limits that's touching his property. So I just, I caution us, and I think we should have these open conversations before we start diving in there and defending one side or the other, because it is in the ETJ.
And I wanted to add something, if you guys can hear me. Can you hear me?
Is that Emily?
Hi, Emily, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. So there's distinctions here between the noise and dust, and then the possible water contamination and these possible encroachments we're talking about. So those, like, property owner encroachments are really a civil thing, and there's not much we can do. What the town can consider doing is passing a noise nuisance and a general nuisance ordinance that could take care of the noise and dust. Those ordinances, though, would not apply in the ETJ. So I don't know, if the rock pit is in the ETJ, it's not gonna apply. It would apply to the sand pit if the sand pit's in the city limits.
It's mostly in the ETJ. And when the map was drawn, it was pretty much deliberately excluded, so that's.
Gone.
Yeah.
You know, Tara, I don't wanna diminish the people that are concerned. And I think when we hear from Chad, we're gonna hear that some of these things are maybe in our rearview mirror versus our windshield. But, you know, one of the struggles we're gonna have as a council to your slogan of saving the farms and all of that is, you know, what I like, you may not like. Nobody's talked about their cows tonight, nobody's talked about their horses, their chicken or their sheep. And, you know, I think when you move to an unincorporated area, like we all moved to up until November of last year, you take your chances. This reminds me a little, when I moved to Texas years ago, and at the time, there were a lot of people around Love Field complaining about the noise. And again, I don't diminish your concerns, I respect your thoughts and opinions. But when you build a $3 million house next to an airport, you know, you gotta know what you're doing before you break ground and start doing that. So, again, when I moved out here, I live on 2426, I prided myself in the fact that I lived on a dirt road. And I worked in high-tech, I was very high up in the telecom world as an executive. But when I drove home, I was dragging dust behind my pickup, and I liked that. And I used to brag to my friends, who were in corporate America, that I lived on a dirt road. Well, it wasn't too many months after I moved here, I was bullied by my neighbors, who had all moved out from the city, to pave our road. And I had to put tens of thousands of dollars into that paving effort. I didn't want that road paved. If you wanted your car clean, you moved to the wrong place, okay? Out here, our cars get dirty, they get dusty, you know, the smell of manure's in the air in the mornings, and it's just the way it is. So I think as we go forward to some of the points that were made, we're gonna struggle with these things, right? Because if we're gonna keep it country, and we're gonna save the farms and all of that, we're not gonna be able to. Now, what I will say is, I am 100% in favor of working together with your neighbors. And I appreciate what you guys have done, reaching out to Robert, and hopefully Chad can shed some light on some of this. Because again, I've got a wedding venue behind me that I am not happy about. But you know what? I had a chance to buy that 45 acres. And I decided that I didn't need another 45 acres. I've got something less than 1,000 acres out here right now. I didn't need any more land, okay? So when I gave up the option to buy that 45 acres, I subjected myself to a wedding venue. And so now I get to listen to Mexican mariachi music and polka music and whatever, you know, subwoofer they got cranked up, all hours of the day and night. And my cows eat aluminum foil balloons that blow into my pastures that are all over Poetry. But you know what? I live in the country, it's just okay. When I have a problem with my neighbor, I try to talk it out with him, because I think that's the way we work it out. We're not gonna legislate things that are gonna make everybody out there happy, I promise you. Because the rule that I'm gonna make is gonna upset you.
I guess, I guess my real question is, is there any law being broken? Whether they're in ETJ or in the city? Is there, as Terry said, there's TEQC and other organizations. There's groundwater laws, air laws, noise laws. There are a lot of noise-type of laws, some federal and some state. And so, I guess the first question, I have, is there any laws being broken in this? If there is, then I think there is some recourse. Not, not that the city, we can do it, because as Terry said, if it's outside the Poetry City, we may not be able to do anything. However, if there is a law being broken, or laws, then in their federal, state, and possibly county, that needs to be addressed. And that's would be my suggestion, is somehow, we gotta find out if there is a law being broken. I don't know that we as a city can take that on, because it's not in our property. But it doesn't mean that the citizens can't take it on. And there are people, and there are lawyers that specialize in that, that would be able to tell you what the law is, federal, state, and possibly county, that would be addressed. So if there's a law being broken, I would encourage you to pursue it.
So Tara, since we have Chad here, can we use him as an expert witness, since he's the owner of the property and can speak?
Well, I do wanna hear from the owner. And I think there's been some consensus about, we'd like to hear the plan. So is there anyone on this council who is affiliated with this property in any way? Okay, all right, Chad, come on up.
Okay. Well, I'm one of the part owners of the sand pit. The other owner's actually here with us as well. So, a couple things. First and foremost, just for the immediate plan, and I don't know if I'm talking to you guys or if I'm talking to you guys, but for the immediate plan, we're gonna do at the sand pit what's been happening at the sand pit for years and years and years, as of our immediate plan right now. I can tell you honestly, we don't have a plan passed that. We've done, kicked around a lot of different ideas, a lot of different thoughts go through our team. But nothing is set in stone. So as you guys may have saw today, we have new signs up for obviously selling dirt and raw materials. We, I just wanna kinda make it clear that we didn't have to come here tonight. We're not invited, we were never invited. I kinda wanted to come and make sure that I could hear.
I did actually reach out to Robert Herman, and I asked.
Okay, I did not hear that, so.
Yeah, no, I actually did and invited.
But I can tell you guys one thing. Number one, I wanna hear the concerns of my neighbors. If some of you guys don't know, I also live on 2450. So it's kind of speaking to myself in a way. And even though I think some of the neighbors around the pit came to me already and said something along lines of, you know, "The last owner, they lived far away," and "Who are you?" And I just want you guys to know that I'm also a poetarian, and I also live on that pit. So, I'm also in this boat with you.
But you have a road, don't you have a road between?
I'm on the road, I'm just on the opposite side of the street. My backyard is not back to the property line. But overall, I wanna hear the concerns. I haven't heard any that are definitely walking on the line of legal or breaking laws. So, I can't say that that's gonna be anything that you guys will ever have to deal with. Because first and foremost, again, everything we do will be legal by the law, whether it's state, county, whatever authority we have to answer to, we always will. So, you can rest assured, there will be nothing illegal, and we'll be in perfect, step by step, with anybody in any regard, whether it's TCEQ, EPA, water, this, and everything else you guys have mentioned. So, I don't think that's an issue at all.
Clarification, you said you wanted to continue the dirt and the sand? Or is it the rock, the concrete crushing?
So, I guess I don't wanna take 20 questions, we could have a lot of them. But just to give some people that clarity, the crusher has a permit for six months only. So they stack up a bunch of concrete, concrete debris, demolition, et cetera. And then the permit, the crusher guy comes in and crushes everything in that six-month window. That's how it works. So, it's not a year-long thing like you guys were thinking, it's not this or that. I don't know how many owners went through it, but I can tell you, it's a X amount of time that they're granted a permit. And then they crush in that permit legally, which is why they kept crushing till all the concrete was gone. So I don't, it's one of those things that I think there's a misunderstanding. But you get a permit, you apply, there are certain types of permits you can get to crush concrete. This one was a temporary, because we don't have the volume necessarily like a big one may be in Dallas. So, it's not, it's, it's, there is no crusher right now. So you guys know, so there will be no, I don't know if we lost it, there will be your own budget for at least six months, and then, can you guys hear me? I can speak loudly, but there will be no crusher for the next six months approximately. After that, hopefully, we have a big pile of concrete, that a whole bunch of hard-working Americans dropped off for free. And then when we bring the crusher in, we crush it all, we sell it to break the roads that everybody drives on, and all the buildings and everything you guys live in and enjoy every day. And then, it'll be out at the end of its permit. So, I don't know what to tell you. I'm sorry if the noise and the dust might be an issue for you, but it's all legal, TCEQ has their, TEQC, whatever it is. They have their guidelines, they have to have certain amount of dust control, this, this, and this. And they have proven to be in compliance every time, except for, I guess, what happened years ago, which I don't know. So, that's kind of all I got for you guys.
Thank you, Chad. To speak to?
Wait, I have a question. Yeah, is, you said the permit, who is the permit by?
I'm sorry, what authority?
Yes, what is?
I think it's TEQC.
Okay, out of Austin, then?
Sure, exactly.
Well, I think there's another permit that's needed. Kevin, I think you had mentioned the name of that, SSWAT or something? A Minors Occupational?
I can't speak to that, I've never been a concrete crusher, honestly, so I don't really know. But I know that the permit holder, which is the guy that comes in and does the crushing, sells the crushing, and then leaves, he has all those necessary required permits.
So Chad? So Chad, you and your partner purchased the land in its entirety, is that correct?
We did.
Okay, so can you share-
Except that little corner that's in the city. We wanna sell that quickly.
Can you share with the group, and I've already had this, I had this conversation with Robert, but-
It's really cheap deal. I gotcha. Let me know.
Can, can you share with the audience who else was in line to purchase the sand pit?
Well, I can't, I don't know officially-
Not names specifically, but categories of companies?
I don't know specifically, but I know there's a lot of different companies that will and want to line up to grab that kind of land to do a number of different industrial, possibly hazardous, depending on the business, type business out of there. So I don't wanna act like I'm, you know, the singing songbird that's saving poetry by buying the pit necessarily. But I promise you, somebody a lot worse than me could have bought it.
I can tell you as nearly a fact, that was going to be a landfill. And we can talk aquifers all we want, but there were landfill waste management companies bidding on that property. And at $4,000 or $5,000 an acre, it would have been a steal because they would have made billions off of that hole. And we would have had Mount Poetry, which would have been probably a 300 or 400-foot tall mountain like Garland and South Dallas has. So I'm not necessarily a fan of Chad's, but I can tell you, there are worse things that could have happened than it being a sand pit.
It's all possible. It's all possible.
Well, I, I do know, to speak to some of the citizens' concerns, and that's why we're here, is, would there be something that, just to be neighborly, would there be something proactive that you might be able to accommodate some of their needs? Is there some, because we wanna be neighborly, right? So we're country folk. Can we, I mean, I think someone mentioned about spraying the dust, or maybe, maybe you have something on the berm that would help. Is there something that you could throw out there?
It's, it's funny, just I'll say this real quick, even though it's gonna be one of those back and forth and never ends kinda situations here, but I can tell you, some people complain about there being a pit in poetry. Some people say they're stealing poetry and they're selling it off by the truckload. Then some people complain if somebody tries to fill it up. And then a neighbor says that they put a big berm behind my, my property. And then another neighbor thanks us, I don't know if they're here, but they're thanking us so much because we brought all this dirt back up to the property line right there on the backside of where I live. And now we're actually putting this dirt in this berm and building it, so their property doesn't keep falling off and eroding into our, into our pit. So it depends on who you're talking to. Everybody's gonna have a different perspective, obviously, but we're never gonna make anybody or all of poetry happy with anything we do. And I don't plan on it. I see, I think that in the end, we're gonna do everything legal as we can. We're gonna be as neighborly as we can. If anybody has a legitimate concern, please feel free to call me. You can reach out to, there's a, I have signs up as of today. You can call the number on the signs and get to me quickly. And if it's legitimate, I will be there to help you any way I can, within the reason of, hey, you're gonna control what I do every day on my property, which is a little bit out there. So I, I think I'm a great neighbor. It depends on who you talk to. Obviously, some people don't like neighbors that even, you know, enjoy a backyard barbecue too loudly. I don't know. But overall, if there's an issue, let me know, and I'll do my best to accommodate, especially if it's legitimate. I just can't entertain everything that every neighbor might be wanting done because it's just gonna be out of, out of control a little bit.
I would just throw that out there. This summer, I did receive a call from a realtor. They were actually wanting to possibly buy, they had a buyer to possibly make it an outdoor water park. Not a boat one, not, not like a, not like Six Flags or Wet n Wild, but a, a lake with boats going around.
You know, for, for those who have only recently moved to the country, I'll share a little secret with you that us country people know, and that is that if there's land that adjoins you that you're worried about, buy it, okay? Save your money and buy it. And by the way, the sand pit has been for sale for a couple of years, so there was plenty of time for us to rally, put our money together and buy it and turn it into a butterfly sanctuary, but we didn't. And so Chad has bought it. And again, we'll try to work together with Chad. I think his intentions, based on the little bit I know about him, are good. But he's, he's a business person. He wants to make money, as I do with cows and some of you with your home businesses.
Okay. Is that all our discussion on that? Okay, number nine. Discuss and consider obtaining a comprehensive building inspection, this is wordy, wordy, prepared and documented in detail in writing, including photos and specific recommendations signed by a qualified building inspector currently licensed and-
...of the condition-
-safety and upgraded requirements for public use of the annex and the sanctuary structures plus connection structures addressing critical items, including substructure support, foundation support, wall structures, flooring, roofing, attic structures, electrical systems, heating, air conditioning, sewer systems, soil drainage, plumbing, insulation in walls and ceiling, black mold, and other critical features of the proposed Poetry Town Hall building located at 2425 F and 986, as noted in proposed lease between Campgrounds Community Cemetery Corporation and the Town of Poetry. I was wordy.
And I guess since, that was my item. Wordy, okay, true. But, but I wanted to put in, because I have two concerns, is one is it's not the annex. It's the sanctuary. Is it safe? Is it strong? Can it stand wind or whatever? And then secondly, if we do go ahead and convert it into a meeting room for the city, what is it gonna take in financial terms? And you can't do that, I don't think, without having first, an inspection, a thorough inspection. And having seen what happened in Florida, Surfside, and other places where there's been buildings that have collapsed, I think it's a city's duty, it's, it's isn't private property, it would be public use, that we need to make sure first, we know that it's safe and will be safe. And then secondly, what is the financial burden? And now, granted, there may be some other people that'll step in and help support it financially, but I think still it's coming on us to know what is it gonna take to do it. And you can't do that without a thorough inspection. And then on top of that, I think it protects all of us legally to know this upfront, not after the fact. So the reason I made it wordy is to make sure everyone understands, this isn't something that a builder can come in and just say, "Yeah, I think it's okay. Go ahead." No, it's gotta be done properly. And properly means all the points that I added in here. And by the way, I'm a professional engineer. I have a license myself. I can't do this, and I wouldn't do it, but I know the limits of what you need in any kind of construction. You have to have, if it's gonna be public use, we have to have a thorough inspection to make sure that we know from the floor and the soil up that it's gonna be okay. And if we do our repairs, what are we asking people to chip in for? How much?
And Tom, you're, you're a chemical engineer by trade?
Yes. Professional engineer means a lot of broad things. My specialty is in refining chemical engineering. But it also means that if I see something that's unsafe, whether it's in my specialty or not, I've gotta speak up. And so that's what I do.
Now, Tom, I am not a professional in the construction or engineering industries, and I can tell you, the sanctuary's unsafe.
We all know that. It's not a surprise.
So I wouldn't see why we would spend money to get an inspection to tell us that it's unsafe. I would say, we don't, we don't make the sanctuary open for public use. And then when we start, if we start to move towards renovation, then we get somebody to come in to tell us what it's going to take.
Well, Brian, the problem is, is that the lease says the sanctuary and the annex will be kept in good and sanitary condition.
We don't have a lease.
Well, it's a point of order. We don't have a lease.
That's already in the, that's in the works, and of course-
Well, the last one that I saw, this is what it said. So my concern is, is if it's gonna be part of one lease, then both parts have to be kept in good and sanitary condition. Now, I don't know what it'd take.
And I think the, you know, the concern that I have, and I've been sort of tossing around in my brain, is that when we took the jobs that we have sitting here, we also took on personal responsibility and liability for every decision that we make. And our livelihood, our retirement, our homes are all at risk if we make a bad decision, right? If we-
That's not, Emily, can you speak to that, please?
That's absolutely true.
You'll have governmental immunity for like things done in the course of your councilman duties?
We have Texas risk-
Well, yeah, but I, with all due respect, Emily, I'm not putting my retirement on your word because I've seen lawyers sue through things too many times in my lifetime that I don't trust that. And so again, I don't think this is a huge risk, but I think it is a risk, and I think we should treat it as though, you know, we could, we could suffer if we make a bad decision.
And I agree. And I've represented a lot of both plaintiff lawyers and defense. And I've seen what they will do if there's money involved. So I'm like Mike. I'm not gonna put my money at, at risk for something that a plaintiff lawyer can go at.
So I did reach out to an inspector who's certified, and he said that he will only inspect, and I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot a little bit, because he would only inspect something that's 100% complete. So that's, his criteria was, it had to be 100% complete. So the annex is about 90% complete, maybe. So we're, you know, the sanctuary is, we now have a deadbolt door there. The front doors are bolted, so there's not entrance there. So, but we do have some citizens that would like to speak. Sharon Crouch.
Hi, I'm Sharon Crouch. I live on Tharrell Lane. I've been a realtor for 30 years. I've done with, dealt with about every home inspector you can imagine. I've also dealt with many structural engineers. And Tom, after I read that, you answered the question that I thought. This was written by an engineer. My grandfather was an engineer that built hydroelectric plants. So I appreciate your concerns. That being said, sometimes you could overanalyze the situation, being that you have a few different variables here to think about. If the structure is deemed unsafe personally, in your opinion, you, and it's not finished where a general home inspector says, "I'm not gonna come in and inspect it," why don't you do a couple of different things? One, have a plumber come in to inspect the plumbing, what needs to be done. Have an electrician to come in and check the wiring and the walls. Staccybotrys, do you know what staccybotrys is? You're a chemical engineer. That's a trick question. Staccybotrys is black mold. It only grows when water is on sheet rock. It does not grow on wood.
Yeah, I know what that is.
So it's only an environmental issue when it grows on sheet rock. It is remediated. This was a hot button in the late 90s. We had them coming in, talking to us, having everybody scared about staccybotrys. You cut out the sheet rock, you remediate what the water's coming from by plumbing repair, treat it with Clorox, put the sheet rock back in. Structural engineer, you can hire a separate structural engineer to check for the framing, the integrity, the flooring of the property. They're gonna check foundation. They may or may not check framing. You may need a separate framing person to do that. I do know good framers. I do know a lot of good people in these different trades. Same thing with HVAC. So you may be overthinking and over, and I know you're wanting to protect everyone, but you also probably have some type of an umbrella insurance that also protects you. And I appreciate what Mike Jeffy said about attorneys. Knowing a lot of them, you are right. They can throw a lawsuit at nothing, but also judges can throw them out if there's protection, no standing for cause. So think about what is your priority? What are your most critical issues on the house? Another good resource, maybe Bob Phillips with the Town of, of Tharrell. I've dealt with him many times on houses that I have remodeled and sold in Tharrell. I am not one that slaps lipstick on a pig. I make sure that it's done like I'm going to live in it. I've torn half of houses down to rebuild them. Found one that a little bitty widget tire jack was jacking up the roof on. So just think about what your agenda is, what your goals are, what you're wanting to accomplish, because you can overanalyze and overengineer anything. You want the safety, and just think about that, and try not to spend more than you have to.
Thank, thank you, Sharon, your time. Yeah, thank you. I will say with this, okay, the temporary town hall is at my feed store. When I refurbished the feed store, I didn't have to do any of this. We had an engineer come for structural. He spent about 10 minutes on the place. We had a septic engineer, and then we had the fire, Woolsey, Fire Chief Woolsey come in and inspect. That was it. That was it. And so to have all this done, I don't know that there's a home in poetry that's had all this, or a business in poetry. She's shaking her head.
I'm not talking about private property. We're talking about a public use.
Well, commercial, I have a, I have a commercial property, though.
Private property person can do what they want, Tara.
Okay, so, but right now, the, the temporary town hall is being held at right, you know, at the feed store. The temporary town hall, and we didn't have to have any of that. Are you gonna go back and inspect that? So, okay, we have another citizen, Herbert Fletcher. Herbert Fletcher.
Hello, how y'all doing? And I understand your concerns very due, because I've been inside the building. But an inspector's gonna come in there and use common sense and tell you anything that you can see, like it needs a guard rail along the sidewalks, it needs plug covers in, it needs light fixtures done, whatever it needs done is what he's gonna tell you to do. But he's not gonna stand behind what he's telling you if something happens. It's like, well, I just told you what I seen. And I deal with inspectors all day long, city, state, and they do a job. And they come in and they inspect your work. They don't see everything, and I'm thinking, why didn't he catch that? I did, you know? But it's his job, and he don't do, most of them don't do half what they're supposed to do or look. So I think you're really gonna waste your money by getting an inspector out here. It's, I mean, if that's what you wanna do, that's fine, but just, if you just go through the building and use common sense, and look at it and say, okay, that's a hazard. We need to fix that before we open this to the public. It might save us all a bunch of money by engineers and overlooking things. But, you know, it's like, we can, we can try to be safe at every way that we go, but stupid is stupid and you can't fix it, you know? That's why I got a, bought a toothbrush the other day, and it says, "Remove wrapper before you use it." I mean, who wouldn't remove the wrapper? But there is people out there that need that instructions. So, but most of y'all have common sense. I mean, I know, because I know, I've, I've been around here and I've listened to you. And all we have to do is go through there and look and see what needs to be done, without spending a bunch of money on engineers and inspectors. And, I mean, we're not perfect, but we should be able to figure out what's safe and what's not, without hiring a bunch of people to come in there and tell us what we need to fix. And that's all I got to say, except I would tear the other part of building down.
Hopefully you'll stand to answer a question.
Okay.
The annex is what it's been working on.
Right.
Do you think that the sanctuary standing next to it, in the condition that it's in, exposes us to potential damage?
It does if you let people in it. But as far as it, as long as you keep the water out, and the foundation is sturdy enough to hold the building in place. Normally, you know, I tear buildings down all the time, and we can tear two walls out under a complete roof, and the roof just hangs there like, what do you want me to do now, you know? So, I mean, these buildings are put together to where one thing holds the other. And it would take God Almighty and His wind to blow it down, I guarantee you. It ain't gonna fall on nobody. I've, I've seen buildings in worse conditions than this, and I'm thinking, why is it, the house I bought was in that kinda condition? I mean, seriously, and I'm thinking, dear-
Okay, Herbert, thank you. Chime, it's expired. Chad West, Chad West.
Tom, this is a very extensive list. However, I would mention that I believe there are two things that you forgot. One is asbestos. I'm sorry, there's one, this is a very extensive list, but there are two things that you missed that I'd like to have added. One is asbestos, which I'm not an expert in, but the other is lead-based paint that I, lead-based paint. Lead-based paint was stopped being made at Sherwin-Williams in 1978, banned in 1980, and I believe the building's over, was built well before that. And actually, by law, if it has lead-based paint in it, it has to be remediated by a licensed contractor. contractor.
Okay, so an expert in the field, Sharon, she's shaking her head. Okay, since she is an expert in the field, I will go ahead and, but go ahead and finish.
She's, she's already spoken and had her treatment.
Yeah, he works for several weeks.
Oh, that's right. Go ahead, go ahead.
It was built in 1960, by the way.
Yeah, I guess my question is, is that, as a town, why do we continue to put money in it? Because I do agree with Brian. It's going to fail. It's not going to pass any of these inspections.
Okay, so the annex actually probably could, yes, the annex probably could.
So then, maybe we need to amend it to have those type of inspections done to make sure that we know.
Yeah, I, I would actually, I would agree with you completely, is, I think the annex is the only section that would be, that I would actually want to even be in. The other is, is, we have never wanted to, you know, be in that for the office section. The office section could be within, with just a guide rail, some gutters, we could actually have our offices in there and we could have committee meetings, we could have, we could have a small town meeting in there. If, we have, thankfully to all the volunteers and the experts, we've had master electricians, they have all new electrical in there, we have all new plumbing, we have a new septic, I mean, it's all new walls practically, there's maybe a fraction of the old walls, it's all been freshly painted. So, actually, the annex is what I would suggest an amendment on here, that we, we only inspect the annex for such things.
I'd also like to make point of clarity, that the town hasn't put money into town spokes, huh?
No, I completely understand that the, that there's been a group of people that have been putting those money in. Of course, now the town is paying for the electric bill, the lawn care, even though we don't have a lease.
So who's, I mean, so, my temporary offices are at my feed store and I'm not being, I'm not expecting reimbursement, but just a point of, you know, for you, for people to realize, okay, so I'm paying the electrical.
I guess the point is, is the council has never looked at, is there any other option? It was unilaterally, seemed to be unilaterally chosen that that was going to be the town hall.
I have asked that.
Even though we don't have any contractual obligation to the facility.
We actually have been asked and nobody was able to come up with that option. There was the drag a metal building.
Josh, can you get my mic?
There, there was the option of dragging a metal building around, which doesn't comply with the law, but, um, there, other than that, there haven't been any other options presented and we have been asked.
But I don't think there's even been any other discussion, other than.
No, there has, we had a meeting over, over that and there is no other possible building, it has, does have to be exclusive use, so if there, I mean, we discussed this at length, at one of our meetings, but as far as I know, there has been no, no sufficient alternative.
And just the concern of it is, is that with all the issues and problems with the building, that the town's going to fight, put themselves in a position for something that they can't sustain.
Well, actually, the annex is, I would, I would give you a tour, come by, it's very, it's been, the foundation has been leveled, the grading work has been done, I feel completely utterly safe in it. I think the electricians will tell you, they've done a great job with all of that, so I, I don't think, with just the annex, I don't think there's an issue for concern there.
You know, respectfully Tara, I don't remember having a detailed discussion about other options, because I know during the election, we had people offering pieces of land and metal buildings and other things, just sort of throwing it out in the air, but I don't remember the council.
Oh, we did, because you made the joke, remember? That we could just have a.
Drag a metal building onto somebody's property, right, but I don't consider that a detailed, here are all the options and the cost and all of that, the only, the only option we pursued extensively has been the church. I don't think we've looked at the cost benefit of doing a metal building on skids or.
Well, we did mention, but there hasn't, in all these months, there hasn't been anyone who has, I mean, we don't have thousands of dollars to put toward even a.
I, I would welcome this going on another agenda, but this has gone way off of a comprehensive building inspection.
It really has, point of order, it has. Okay, so, I would make a motion that we do an inspection, now, there is no air conditioning or heating in this, but do an inspection in the annex, because the other is deadbolted and blocked off. And the inspector that I consulted said he won't even do a building like that. So it is kind of separate. And Emily, can we make, when we get the lease agreement back, I guess we can make sure that there is a separation to, to that, to voice the concern.
Yes.
Tom made, we can make that distinction?
Now, Tom.
Did you hear me? Yes.
So if we don't lease the other part, if we can exclude it Emily, does that make it the property owner's responsibility to secure it?
Yes. Excluded from the lease, yes.
Okay.
So, Tom, I know that as a professional engineer, you have safety reporting requirements, so if we limit the inspection to the annex, does that satisfy your professional requirements?
Yeah, I'm, I'm confident, I think I'm confident that the annex itself would probably stand up. For one thing, it's newer, a lot newer, you know, it's, the sanctuary's 100 years old or more and so it's different construction. And what I've seen, I would say probably, and, and I would not guess that an inspector would find many things that would be a problem with it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it wouldn't be jeopardizing your professional license if, if we limited the scope to the annex. I just want to be cognizant of what's your, what your professional requirements are.
That's right, and took it out of the lease too, so that it remained with the campground cemetery. That's their building, we're only leasing the annex and whatever else. Now, in a few years, if we wanted to come in and do the sanctuary, and I don't have anything against the sanctuary, I think it'd be beautiful to have it done, but what would it cost and, and what is involved, and I don't think anybody can do that without first having an inspection.
So can we, can we set some parameters on the inspection? Because I don't want to spend $10,000 on an inspection. I mean, we need to sort of bound this thing or go get some proposals and bring them back and we'll vote on them.
Well, I think, I think, you're talking about for the annex?
Yeah, whatever it is. And, and to her point, I mean, how extensive, is it just sort of someone's opinion or is it something that would hold up in a court of law?
I think it should hold up in a court of laws, it's a public building.
Well, then it's more than just a casual buyer's inspection.
Well, yeah, she's dealing with a private house. I mean, you don't have to have an inspection on your house if you write a check for it. It's yours. So, and you're taking all the risks yourself, but this is a public building. I mean, and as far as I know, public buildings take on a whole different set of abilities.
So would you be willing to take charge of that, Tom, and go get us some quotes and sort of figure it out and then bring it back to us so we can look at it?
Well, I think I'd be, I could go out and I could find if there were people that would do for the, an inspection for the annex at a reasonable price, and I think it would be much more reasonable than doing it for the sanctuary. And yeah, I'd be happy to go out and look and find some people and see what they could do and bring it back here for approval.
Okay, I make a motion that we put Tom in charge of getting us some proposals to get the building inspected by somewhat professional.
I have to ask my wife first.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded that we commissioned Tom Anderson to solicit some quotes on, for inspection, inspectors.
Of the annex only.
Of the annex only. All those in favor of that? And that passes unanimously?
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks.
Sorry, Abby.
All right, number 10. Discuss and consider the dumpster shortage within the town and solid waste vendor updates, including revenues and accompanying service list. This was just so we could talk about it, and let's see, Tom.
Can, can you define the problem? Because I guess I didn't know we had a shortage.
Well, um, so, I, it was very illuminating, CRS apparently has 14 dumpsters in the town, Titan has three and one roll-off, AWT, I still not, I don't have their list, so I'm not sure how many they.
You don't have a receipt?
Okay, well, we'll talk about that. And Reed, none of the others required a receipt. Reed has zero, but they do have one roll-off. So, and apparently, there is a lot of country folk that like dumpsters. So, with 17, and I, I was without a dumpster for a week and a half, and so I thought, well, if I am, I'm sure, and they said, it would be another month before they could get dumpsters and maybe it's just because of the national scene, but there is a problem apparently with getting dumpsters and, and I just think that, you know, we need to be aware of that shortage.
So, so what we're saying is a list of approved vendors for the town of Poetry currently cannot supply the dumpster needs?
Not within like, a month or so.
Okay, and that's not a trick question on this, I don't have a dumpster, so I don't know.
They can talk to that because they would know better, they're on the, on the ground doing all that, but, um, what, um.
So the rule that.
So I was asked, to give you a case of point, I was asking for a six-yard dumpster for my feed store and nobody had six-yard, they had four-yard or two-yard.
You asked for four or six, and I gave you an option, that we would have it a week after, and in the meantime, I could deliver a two-yard and service it twice that week.
You really need to be on the list if you want to talk?
Yeah, we'll let you talk, okay, we'll let you talk. So, um, okay, so, the citizens, well, these are, Brian French is number one here, Brian French, he is actually of Titan, Brian French, so he is one of our approved vendors.
So I'm, uh, we've been at this quite a long time tonight, I'm going to be blunt with you guys, there is not a dumpster shortage. We all have dumpsters. There is a shortage of people that want to do business with the mayor that does not treat our vendors with any respect. Sir, you're eating in about three minutes, you can get me afterwards. I have two yards and four yards that'll be available in a few days. I've got 10, 15, 20, 25, and 30-yard roll-offs that are available right now, that can be delivered tomorrow. I can have you a six-yard, couple of, probably a couple of weeks. There is no shortage, but it is limited because we can't get paint right now, I'm waiting on paint to come in later this week. You do have to wait, just like everybody else does, and you actually told me that you were insulted that I asked you to prepay for a dumpster before we delivered it. Our cheapest dumpster is $1,200, I'm not dropping it anywhere unless it's paid for. Citizen, other citizens in Poetry also pay prepay when we bring out dumpsters.
And I also mentioned to you that the, the roll-off that I paid for initially was $400 more than what Brian French, excuse me, Mr. French and Laura French were able to provide for us for four years.
Is he a banger of this town?
He is not any longer, but this is a point of reference, he never once required me to pay in advance, so it was different.
I don't do business like he does.
Okay, so it was different.
As a point of order, we're, we're off the dumpster shortage at this point.
Okay, so, we are talking about the dumpster, the dumpsters, so CWD also provides dumpsters.
CWD is also not a vendor for Poetry.
Okay, but again, I found, I found your responses frankly.
You didn't agree with my responses.
Well, I, okay, initially, you did not make it clear, your, your staff was very rude to me.
You, you actually wrote me an email and called my 68-year-old employee Krusty because you didn't agree with what she told you. And just so you guys know, if any of the council members need it, I've got email correspondence that had the, the type of.
Okay.
Rude, demeaning.
She was.
Behavior that she had with us.
I'm just saying, she, I was trying to be nice about it, but she was very rude.
I have, I have 6,000 customers and not one complaint except for, from you.
Well, perhaps she was preconceived rude to me, I don't know, but I'm just saying that, um, you know, look, I.
You have been nothing but passive aggressive in our entire correspondence when I'm trying to deliver.
I just agree with that.
You can disagree with it all day, that's your opinion, this is my opinion. And I told you several times that we could service you, but you were going to have to wait. I actually moved you up 12 people ahead to try to assist you with a four-yard and you would not pay. We gave you two weeks and I finally had to put it out.
Okay, so my understanding was I had to pay the 875, I wrote a check for that, but my understanding was not to have to prepay for the dumpster, that was just a miscommunication, that's all that was.
Uh, you wrote us and actually asked, "Where's my dumpster?" and we told you, you needed to prepay.
Okay, I didn't, but prior.
I cannot treat you any better than I treat any other citizen in Poetry.
No, I don't expect that at all. I do not expect that, in fact, I think I've got worse treatment.
I'm going to jump in.
You actually said you were insulted that we asked you to prepay, I asked.
Point of order, let's talk about.
Point of order, I have three minutes, you can ask me the questions afterwards.
All right, so let's talk about this outside of this, this is.
That's, that's fine.
This is personal.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so I just want to remind everyone that this is not a time for personal attacks and so you will waste your three minutes on something that's not allowed in the meeting. So your three minutes are ticking as we speak.
Is this, is this an attack on, on Tara herself or is it the way that she acts, being the mayor of Poetry and acting this way outside of being the mayor of Poetry?
So I'll, I'm not going to debate it with you, this is not a forum for personal attacks against a certain member of the council, so we need to get back on.
Your, your member of council has an, an issue on here that's a dumpster shortage and we don't have a dumpster shortage and that's what we are arguing about.
Okay, so Mayor, you can call a point of order or tell him where, how many, how many minutes he has left or where we're at on time.
Okay, you have 20 seconds left.
I'd like to have some more time because she interrupted me as I was speaking.
So Mayor, you can grant more time or you can call a point of order.
Are you going to call it to order?
Call to order.
You know, Tara, Brian does bring up a point that I hadn't really thought about on this issue, but you know, when, when we make a decision, I think sometimes there are unintended consequences and it sounds like we may have inadvertently by limiting the number of participants in the trash business and poetry, sort of changed the cost structure, right? Because as much as we'd like it to be super competitive, maybe the guys that could afford to throw a dumpster out for a few hundred bucks aren't these people, right?
These are required.
Right, so, so anyway, I think this is maybe one of those things we didn't see coming, but it's coming and now we got to deal with it.
Well, I will tell you, I am serviced by Reed and he's been excellent and very agreeable.
You have a flatbed trailer, you've got a fence.
Okay, it's a dumpster, it's a roll-off. It's, I'm going to pay the, I'm going to pay the $25 dollar fee to the town and it has a sign on it as required in the contract. So, we don't have a description of the roll-off in our, in our ordinance.
All right, well, again, we're not really here for personal stuff. I don't think there's an action that can be taken anyways. We're not going to provide dumpsters to people or businesses. We've already had the experts tell us they'll be available eventually and of course, I believe you, so this sounds like a self-solving problem, so.
But what about dumpsters?
Thank you for that information, by the way. So, maybe we can just move on to number 11, we've all been here a little while anyway. Unless there are other citizens.
Okay, so we have, Brian spoke his three minutes, Chad West, Chad West.
Thank you, Brian.
I guess for clarity's sake, who was the citizen who asked for this to be on the agenda?
There was no citizen, that was.
So you put this on specifically for yourself? So it's okay for every citizen to have to pay $6.50 more for every one of their polycards, but your prices go up and, and you tell me there's a, a shortage because you're having to pay more money?
I think you're misunderstanding. I'm paying for a roll-off, but there was, there, they told me that I would have to wait another month for a dumpster.
You had a dumpster on your premises through Titan and through your words that you just said, you had a roll-off.
I had a roll-off, I'm differentiating.
You just said that you got rid of it because it was $400 more a month.
Well, it was also, I wanted to go down to the six-yard, which they did not have the six-yard at the time.
I guess it's, it's problematic, and this is the challenge I would put up before the council, that we have a personal issue on a town agenda.
No, it is not. Okay, my question was to the council and to our attorney, is if I'm having this shortage, perhaps there are others having this shortage. So we have more, we have, you're out of order, there are, there are four, there are 17 dumpsters, okay, two-yard, four-yard, six-yard dumpsters being utilized in our town and that was a lot more than what I anticipated and what we talked about. So that's, it was just out of concern that we, we want to meet the needs of our citizens.
You're a concerned.
Yeah, as mayor, I actually can put things on the agenda. Yeah, as mayor, I actually can put things on the agenda. Okay, so it sounds like you're insulted about that, but let's move on.
Okay, to Simeon's point, I think we don't want to get involved in negotiating pricing or delivery times or any of that. I mean, that's welcome to your new vendors. We all decided to do this, and it is what it is. So if they tell you it's a week, it's a week, and otherwise, you gotta go help them paint dumpsters. Yeah, well, we're gonna talk to them.
Okay, so Kim Kilmer, Kim Kilner, did you want to speak? Okay, Joshua Wicks?
Okay, now, this does say dumpster shortage, but it also said solid waste vendor updates, including revenues and accompanying services. So we've been asking, trying to get a receipt, because we have our quarterly dues that we now have to pay to be in the town, which we have done. We can't get a receipt for it. So my question is, one, can we please get our receipt? That's why we don't have the customer list to you guys, because our office manager said that you'll get your list when we can have a receipt.
Immediately when you...
Please don't interrupt three minutes. I really don't wanna, yeah, I'm a slow talker. Sorry. Now, the mayor said that we couldn't get one because she wasn't there? And, I mean, that's fine, whatever. But also, are you going to have someone that's on the city staff to receive and process the payments and not just somebody that happens to work at her store? Because, I mean, now we're just giving our checks with our routing account.
You can mail them.
Someone that just randomly works at her store versus someone who's actually on the city staff. And that's just, that's more than personal preference. Also, Waste Connections, Progressive Trucks have been seen coming out of Woodland Estates. So I would like to know what has been taking care of that, if anything's being done with that. I mean, Tri Country runs on Wednesdays, Homeland runs behind the airport here on Fridays. The Woodland Estates, they're actually near Councilman White's and his neighbor's house.
I've seen him.
What's that?
I've seen him out there.
Okay, which I don't know who's their customer down there. And then also, what's being done about that? And also, a roll-off has to roll off of the truck. Sorry. Go ahead. Not a trailer. Go ahead.
Okay, to answer your, you know, there's a lot there. So none of the other vendors require a receipt, and honestly, so...
We need it for tax purposes.
No, I get it. And so immediately, I thought, oh, that's a good thing to have. So this is our first time at this, so immediately I got with Creative Service, and we designed a professional-looking receipt book. And today is Tuesday, so that should be here this week. And I'll be happy to get you a professional receipt from our town. And, you know, Secretary Caroline only works, what, two or three days in the temporary town hall offices a month, and so it'll be...
Can they mail them to a P.O. box or something?
Yeah, they can mail them to the, we have a mailbox. You're welcome to mail that. I know that C.R.S. mailed theirs, Titan mailed theirs.
Is that out on the road, or is that...
That's the one on the road. I check that every day.
It's a locking mailbox.
It's a locking mailbox. I check it regularly.
Oh, yeah, that works for tow chaining to pickup. It's...
Well, I mean, I've checked it, and we've received all kinds of important mail there. So we will, yes, we will try and get you that receipt just as soon as we get that in. To speak to, we do, and this is kind of brings up that point, is we have a temporary town offices in the fee store. That is not ideal, and I agree with you. It's not ideal. So once we have some sort of town offices, we can have a secretary take your funds, give you a receipt, just like it's supposed to work.
Joshua, who are you with?
I'm with AWT Sanitation.
Okay, thank you. And do you guys have dumpsters?
Yes, sir. We have plenty of dumpsters.
What sizes? Not a trick question, just curious.
Threes and fours that are available, but you can, we can always...
And what's the lead time on them? Because we've been talking about too much or not enough.
Say if we want to order a brand-new dumpster that, say if we had nothing on our yard, they would get it to us within a week or two.
And do you pay upfront for it?
Yes, sir. We always pay upfront for it. And then, especially with our roll-offs, dumpsters, whatever we do, they do have to pay for those upfront. Upon delivery, the roll-offs have to be paid for.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joshua.
I wonder, were you gonna go on the Waste Connections and Progressive Trucks?
Oh, okay, thank you for reminding me. Okay, so I have actually submitted two violators in our town to the judge. Caroline and I worked on a letter to both the Hunt County Judge and the Kaufman County Judge, because they're in two different areas. And so Emily, our attorney, submitted it to the prosecutor. We just got that back, I think, this afternoon. So they made a few amendments, and we'll be submitting large pictures of the violations. And if there's any citizens who are aware of any violations, it is a $500 a day fine for violators in our town. And we have a judge to send the letter and the pictures to.
But the house that's being picked up has to be within 300 and something feet of the road and in the city limits, right? Because they can go through our town to the ETJ.
No. If you have a trash, this is my understanding. Emily, isn't that correct? If they have a trash provider on their road, on the road, that it doesn't matter?
Well, no, they can come through us to get to the ETJ. We can't stop them from using our roads.
Oh, I mean, I'm talking about if the house, if their house is back the 300 feet, their dumpster, or their trash out there by the road, then my understanding is that that also...
So you're saying if the property adjoins the road, if it faces, if it's on the road, if any part of the property, regardless of whether or not the house is in the 311 feet, then it still has to comply with the trash ordinance? Is that a correct interpretation?
Emily, is that your understanding?
Are you guys saying if the properties are partially in the ETJ and in the city, if those properties have to comply?
Let's say the house is in the ETJ, but the driveway's in the town.
It's a complicated question, and it's gonna be down to case law. It's not gonna be in the statutes. And I don't know if our, like, our template ordinance that everybody signed spoke to that specifically.
Yeah, I'm not convinced you can force compliance on ETJ.
Yeah, it would need to be researched through case law.
Anyway, my only point is, I see these people that are not supposed to be here, not to take away from Brian and them, because people need to play by the rules, but they are going down 2,400 into the bottoms to pick up trash from people that aren't in the city limits. And we can't stop them from using our road, right? I see waste management down there. I see, you know, Progressive and whoever. So I would just want to make sure, before we turn in people as offenders, we make sure that they're picking up at a...
Well, the ones that we have pictures of are blatantly on 1565. So it's not even... No, in fact, I did cut one Waste Connection truck, but it clearly went to the ETJ, and that's their right to do so.
I mean, it's interesting, because they pulled out of a lot of our town. It's weird that they would hang on to a few little outliers.
I found that strange as well.
Yeah, it seems odd. Simeon, you had enough?
Okay, number 11, moving on. There, oh, I'm sorry, Kim, did you want to speak to this? I thought you were passing.
Mr. Kim.
Oh, okay, I thought you passed. I'm sorry. Mr. Kilmer.
Okay, as for dumpsters, trailers, and all that, it doesn't work. Better it is?
You're better?
We spent probably 40 grand in the last two months to make sure we could provide for Poetry, which I think next October, we'll all be kicked out, and y'all go one vendor, because this didn't work. But that's my theory.
No, not happening.
We'll see.
But there's still 200 people that we're not getting when we signed that paper that said we got them. And Blackjack's dumpster that was on 96, that's 6,000, 7,000 bucks y'all could have made if you enforced your $500 rule. But you could have called him. 24 hours later, called Mr. French or AWT, and they would have removed that box for you, and about two times of that, they won't be back in your town. And that is legal.
Well, I will tell you that as soon as they saw me take a picture, it was gone the next day.
Yeah, I took a picture two weeks earlier. I took it on my route on Tuesday, and the little lady that was like the 16-year-old.
We're talking about the same place, but... Yeah, now, you know, we have 26 miles of road. I have other things to do besides perusing, looking for violators. We don't... So I, we need citizens to speak up.
The way we see it is by the time y'all figure this out, that we're gonna have all these containers. I've got 200 containers sitting at the yard right now that I'm putting one here and there, you know, through the town. But why am I paying a payment on those trailers that? We had to count the number, and I'm not saying I was gonna get more poetry than anybody else, but I wasn't gonna be the guy when they called, didn't have a container, because I've got everything I need.
So I guess I'm lost a little bit in your argument. So you're saying that the people that could no longer pick up trash left, leaving people needing services?
When this all started months ago, it was 679 homes or whatever it was. We're right now at 300, and you run the numbers.
I haven't gotten all the lists, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, we're around 300. The four of us are talking around 380 homes. There's 200 and something homes that do not have trash service, which is $20,000 a year. You're gonna be short already on your budget.
I know at least four homes that aren't on you guys.
So we got a big...
There's 200 people in Poetry, 200 to 230, that don't have trash that you're not reaping $6.50 from.
No, it's not necessarily that they don't have trash. I mean...
Oh, they have trash, or they're burning it, but we're not reaping benefit. Let's do this real quick. Who do you have?
Reed.
Who do you have?
Uh, Kim.
Who do you have?
Reed.
Who do you have?
C.R.S.
Who do you have?
C.R.S.
Who do you have? No, you do not. You have Progressive. I turn around in your driveway on Friday. That's how I know you kept Progressive and your neighbor.
I'm gonna admit, I don't do the trash service. I thought we had C.R.S. I'm sorry if I'm wrong about that.
That's how the city rolls. Nobody knows.
Well, we do not have a code... Again, this is our first to go with this. You recognize that anytime you start something new, it's unchartered in our area, and so there are gonna be some things to work through.
My fear is it's gonna take y'all a year to get to this point, and then we're gonna have it again.
Point of order, let him talk, please.
By the time, y'all, I'm not saying y'all, I'm not pointing fingers. I'm just saying, at the rate we're going of this drag our feet, let everybody keep driving around your town, you're gonna be in October again. What are we gonna do in October? We're gonna sign another year contract, and then here we go again. You see, the problem that we have, we're more invested than any of y'all.
You're saying you've invested and you'd like to see...
Yes, we've invested in Poetry.
Right, right.
Okay, so as an offering, so my city email is cm.jaffe@poetrytexas.org. If you will send me any of you people you see that are not doing it right, then I will make sure that we, as a council, address that, because that's only fair.
And then another thing, and then I'm done, is back behind the airport, I don't even remember the guy's name, he's...
Bishop Field?
You go behind the, you get behind Bishop Field. He's back there. He called and screamed and yelled at Kim the other day because his bill changed 96 cents.
Oh, my.
And he's like, "I'm not in the poetry. I'm six miles away." We're like, "Sir, we're just following the map." "Well, I don't care, and you can't force me to pay it." And we're like, "We're not worried about the 96 cents. Just calm down," you know? But have the citizens of Poetry been sent a letter? I mean, 698 stamps that let you know you live in a city...
They have received numerous newsletters regarding that. So, but yeah, that may be a good point.
Because people like that are never gonna call for trash service if they don't know they have to change.
Well, again, help us.
We can do that.
Help you. Let us know where you see obvious violations and issues. And we, as a council, myself, I'll lead it. We'll follow up on it, and we'll see. I mean, it may be a misunderstanding, or it could be, you know, somebody in pure violation. Maybe they don't know. I don't know, but let's...
I think that's it. I think a lot of them just don't know.
Yeah, let's try to work it out, especially on the big stuff, because a big metal is big money.
Well, one Thursday, we were delivering containers, and there was 48 behind the airport, right? I think it's 48 people that weren't us, weren't any of us.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thanks.
Do you have, what dumpsters do you have available, Sean? 246, 810, 12, 20? 246, you don't do roll-offs?
246, and they're available.
So you do have a six?
Okay, all right, very good.
Thanks, Sarah.
All right, number 11. Discuss and take, consider taking action to approve a lower threshold for competitive bidding than what is required by state law. I believe Emily, last time, clarified that the state requires for towns a $50,000 threshold for competitive bidding. So that's where we are.
This is on here just as a discussion point, as a type A city can choose V.O. ordinance or action of the council to reduce that to another number. So I just wanted to put it on here since it was something brought up last time.
Okay.
So I brought it up last time when we was talking about the trash service. And actually, Emily and I talked about this, and she asked me if I want to talk about it. So, yeah, and just out of the, just apparent, our transparency, I asked Emily if we could go to $1,000 for the mowing contract. That should get us into a contract. And that way, we would go out for bids. And I think, I think we just have to protect what little nest egg we have right now. And I don't think there's anything wrong with $60 a month. But I don't know how much that's gonna cost us over the year. I don't know if this guy's gonna mow 30 times a year or 42 times a year.
So are you suggesting going out for bid for a lawn service?
Yeah.
Okay, but, okay, so you understand that writing a bid costs hundreds of dollars in legal fees, then putting in the newspaper costs several hundred dollars, and our whole bill for the entire summer is...
How many times are we gonna mow this year?
Uh, I can...
32 or 36? So Emily, I think in one of your emails, and I think Tara was on that email, you said that these are pretty cheap to write.
We just have a lot of templates, so we wouldn't be starting from scratch building something. We've got a lot of standard bid documents, so it wouldn't be... I mean, it would take some legal work, but it wouldn't be astronomical.
Okay. So, and maybe not necessarily a bid, do we? And this is all open for discussion. This is not finger-pointing or anything. I just, I want everybody to be clear about where our money's going. And if we're mowing it 40 times a year at $60, I mean, it's pretty clear that's $2,400. And if the council's okay with that, well, then we're okay with that. But as Emily's made the point, we don't have to go out and bid at $50,000. We can lower our threshold to protect our little nest egg.
Well, and I don't know that we need to go through a formal bid process as we'd be, you know, on a larger expenditure. But I think we just need to give the air of fairness in our community, right? That it's not just one person making decisions. But in all fairness, we did say, as a council, we give you authority to spend up to X number of dollars at your discretion, right? So I think we gotta watch that we don't get tangled in our own rope here.
Yeah, because reoccurring expenses can exceed kind of what the council's threshold is, right?
Right, is it stuff that's, if it's recurring, is it above a certain number? Is it certain types of services? I mean, it's, you know, I don't want to...
So to be above approach, reproach, you know, this, it's just something to consider. Do we lower what our maximum...
Do you have a number in mind?
Huh?
Do you have a number in mind?
Absolutely not. I mean, Emily said, "Do you want to go as low as 1,000?" You can go as low as 1,000. I don't think that's unfair and unreasonable.
I think that would be really cost prohibitive. But here's the thing, I thought we discussed this last time where, hey, if you guys want to throw it out there and we put an informal bid out there in the post or next door, whatever, to me, that's the free, inexpensive way to handle this. If you're concerned about the $2,000, $2,400 that we're spending in lawn care, I mean, why not? I mean, I don't...
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. What was the suggestion?
An informal bid.
An informal bid, because the cost to benefit ratio there is really, I mean, if you're gonna... On things like, you're saying recurring cost, why don't we put it out there? I thought we kind of, you kind of alluded to that this last meeting, was on recurring cost, recurring things. We put it out there on Neighbor or the Post or in some other informal method. And then we come, bring it back, and say, and bring it to the council and say, okay, here's our offers. You know, here's the pluses and minuses of each, and you decide.
Okay, I could see that to an extent for like long-range planning kind of things. But if you have a plumbing leak, I don't want to wait two months before we say, okay, well, yeah, this is the guy we're gonna use. So we need to put some structure around this that still allows some flexibility.
I mean, this is open discussion, but I don't want to start building rules to handcuffs us at the end of the day. Like you said, we have a plumbing... the end of the day, like you said, we have a plumbing leak, and now we can't even turn off the water, because we don't know if we can afford to pay that guy yet. So, to your point, you have a good point.
I can, I think I would be more in favor of looking at recurring charges and, and that kind of thing than I, an open bid, than lowering the bid amount for a particular charge. So I, I think that might be easier to manage in, in the long run. You know, we have the $500 signing level. Is there another number we need to look at for recurring or annual, or, you know, that type of thing? I think that might be something that, that we need to consider. Like I said last time, you know, at some point, we've said Tara here...
Sure.
Essentially manage the, the company, the, the business, the town. So we need to give her the authority that does that, but we also need to make sure, not just Tara, but even future mayors, have the ability to actually do what we've asked them to do.
But take mowing, for instance, if, let's just use 40 and 60. 40 weeks a year, $60 a month, $2,400. What if we have somebody that says, man, I would have mowed that for $1,800 a month? Don't you think it'd be beneficial for the city to hold that $600 in their checking account?
$1,800 a month? No.
A year.
A year.
$1,800 a year. $2,400 versus $1,800.
Yeah. I, I think it would be good to, to see what else is out there.
I mean, we're scratching, we're gonna be scratching for every dime when we start fixing these roads.
Agreed. But I just want to make sure, again, that we are allowing the people, we, when we're judging somebody, because there's a lot of judgment, you may have noticed, but when we're judging somebody, we need to make sure that they have the authority to do what we're judging them on.
Well, please don't assume I'm judging, because I'm talking about the added money that we can save in our account by going out for bids.
I judge every day. I'm, I'm not that good of a person. I judge every day.
I'm just saying, I'm not judging Tara for the $60. But do you not agree, if we go out for bid and save $500, that that's beneficial to the city?
Can I, can, we make a motion that for, we do an informal bidding for the lawn mowing, because that seems to be really what you want to speak about, maybe?
Well, I think it needs to be a resounding theme on how we do business, if it's something that we can, this is gonna be something that we do every week for the rest of our existence. I don't want to look at it like we're looking at this in the microscope. I want to change our philosophy on how we spend the money. This is something that we're gonna do forever and ever and ever. We can call it, we can call it mowing now.
I mean, I can't spend over $500 without Tom signing a check, and you guys...
Unless you write it $400 a month, or 400 times of occurrence.
Well, I mean, Tom has to, Tom or Simeon have to also sign that, but, I mean, but no, I get for returning, but, but again, the formal bidding process is very costly, so maybe there's some sort of alternative for recurring costs, other than electrical, because we don't really have a choice with that, right? So, but it might be that, and again, for repairs and that kind of thing, I don't know, maybe we need to think about this some more.
Can we, I make a motion, Tara, we move this to that workshop session we're gonna have, where we talk about NIMs and other things.
It's gonna be a long one.
Yeah, we're gonna need another workshop.
We're gonna need like two workshops.
Gonna need a bigger boat.
Do we have a second on that? Do we have a second on it? And we'll digest that a little bit. All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded by Fowler, that we move this discussion to a workshop. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, number 12. Discuss progress of implementation of, of, excuse me, I was trying to see if my cards, I didn't skip anybody. Wait a minute, I did. I'm sorry, I did not see it. Amelia Wicks, do you want to pass? Kim Kellner, did you want to pass? Or, okay, okay. All right, moving on then. All right, so, 12. Discuss progress of implementation of council members' town emails. Okay, so most towns that have a website that I've seen have where you have access to the council members by, via email. And so we have, last meeting, we gave, Caroline gave each of the council members, it's cn dot their last name at poetrytexas.org. And so I, how many of you have been successfully? Or maybe I shouldn't do that. Okay. But Josh is here tonight to help any of the council who wants help with that, and we have to, we can't talk about that outside of here.
Except, except we don't have email service in here. I don't. And I guess, and it's, since it's me, either, I need help, or...
You're not the only one.
The question, why do we need it? Is it necessary?
Well, I think legally, Emily, didn't you say something about, well, I know it was a little awkward with Open Meetings Act. We have to be careful, like, I can't just get information, we've had this discussion, information from citizens, and disperse it to the council members.
Yes, and also for liability purposes, you want all your town business to go through a email address that's affiliated with the town, and your status as a council member, so that nobody can point to, you know, an email scandal of people using personal emails, so.
So Josh, can you just go into his email and just do a hard forward to his personal account? And that way, everything will be recorded in the town account, but it'll just be forwarded.
His responses won't be recorded?
Is that a, that's probably a lawyer question. Can you forward your business, or your governmental work, to a personal email, and send personal emails from that?
It's not good to entangle the two.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so, considering the last couple of years.
Now, one thing that Josh has been doing, I think we just did that today, he wanted to do an extra step to make, ensure that our emails cannot be erased, because it is a legal document. Once someone emails us in, it is a legal document. And that, is that just for email, or is it other things as well, Emily?
It can apply to text messages, too. So it, I mean, it's very, anything that has anything to do with town business is subject to the Public Information Act and needs to be recorded and not erased.
Is it, is it three or five years, do you know?
I thought it was seven.
I don't know off the top of my head, but that's something I can look up quickly and get you guys an answer tomorrow.
IRS is seven, I think, but...
Yeah, I think it might be higher than five. If you said seven, that sounds right.
Okay.
So I, I think the two holdouts are Tom, who's having mechanical errors with getting it working, and then we've got Brian, who has a little bit of a conflict.
Yeah, philosophical error. So Josh, have you been able to look into that?
I did look into it. But Josh, if, if I came down to the store with my cellphone...
I can do it here tonight, if you want.
Could you do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does not have, in his defense, his home does not have adequate ser...
I'm sorry?
Your, his home does not have adequate service to do all that, so he's absolutely welcome.
We got Wi-Fi here.
Yeah, I can do it tonight for him, on his phone.
Okay.
So...
As for Brian's issue, I did look into it.
I can't do it tomorrow, but maybe Thursday.
Okay. Brian's problem was his, with two-factor authentication, authenticator app, and I think I might be able to set it to SMS, text message.
If we can do that, I'll be fine with it.
Okay. Also, you only want it on desktop, you don't want it on the phone?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't like anything on my phone. I despise my phone. I work for a phone company, and I hate my phone.
Is there any other emails you want me set up?
Now, Caroline, do you have yours set up? Okay, so it is secretary... Okay, secretary@poetrytexas.org.
I thought that was smarter, so you could always stay the same.
Right, well, yeah.
And are these published? Are they on the website?
They are not yet, because we are kind of waiting for everyone to get on board first, I think.
Is there an all email that you want set up? Or like, contact, there should be like a contact that goes to the secretary, but is there like, are you allowed to do an all for, all council members?
Yeah, do like council@poetrytexas.org.
I don't know. Emily, do you have any suggestions in that regard?
Yeah, some cities will do just like a contact@nameofcity.org, and it generally gets forwarded to the city secretary if somebody can't, you know, find that it's secretary@poetry.org.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, number 12.
Josh, could I get your cell? I can just send you a text on Thursday.
Yes, I will give you my cellphone number.
I'm sorry?
I will give you my cellphone number.
Okay.
On the public record.
This school's already hit him up a few times, yeah. So, again, thank you, Josh, for all your volunteer. I really appreciate your services to our town. All right, so... No, we do have a check for Fay Temple Baptist that Tom and I signed. We have $50 a month, or $50 each meeting to pay, anyway, that's all. Okay, general public comments. We have Herbert Fletcher. No, Bruce Seet, he passes. Okay, Brian French? He's gone. Okay, and Rob?
Ferguson.
Ferguson, Ferguson? Ferguson.
I'm running for Kaufman County District Attorney, and I think that if you guys live in Doot Town, I want to make sure that the county's available to, to listen to you and to help you find that line of where can we help, and where does the city step in. The reason I'm running for district attorney is that I have a very unhappy with the direction of crime in Kaufman County. I'm a former assistant district attorney in Collin County, and I started a 501(c)(3) that provides legal assistance to sexually exploited children. So I'm running on a platform of zero tolerance for drug dealers, zero tolerance for child predators, and zero tolerance for repeat offenders. My wife's gonna kill me when I get back, because it's late, but my cellphone that was on the back of these cars, I would be happy to stick with anyone if there's any questions that you have. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Rob.
Should let him go first.
Okay, thank you, Emily.
Thank you. Talk to you guys later.